We are now live, sir, you have it.
Okay, I'd like to start the October twenty eighth planning board meeting. It is now six thirty-three. We're gonna call, we're gonna determine a quorum, Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Reyes.
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny.
Here.
Secretary Lukowitz.
Here.
Vice Chairman Kalunian.
Here.
And Chairman Flynn is here. I believe we're missing three members tonight, Mr. Mr. Mattson. Is Mr. Mattson here?
Yes.
Yeah, he's here.
So we're missing Mr. Azankowski and Mr. Mr. Paselli that are accused tonight, so we do have a quorum of seven.
Mr. Chair, before we start, can I bring in, uh, cause okay if I bring in Attorney William Delaney? I don't know how or why, but he's under attendees. He was sent an invitation to be a participant.
Absolutely.
Okay. Oh, I'm not a host, uh, so I can't.
Russ, what's his, what's his name?
It's William Delaney, the last one.
I'm here.
Okay. Is your, do you have a picture that will show up also if we need it?
Yes, it should.
All right. We don't see it, but that's okay. Ed, could you, before we start, could you just make me a co-host?
I will do that, sir, in two seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we called the meeting to order and we determined the quorum, so let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Okay, number, number four, approval of minutes four point one, September twenty-three, twenty-twenty meeting.
Motion approved by Carl.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz. Any discussion on the meeting, on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a quick quorum on it, Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Ray. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian.
Aye.
Mr. Flynn also says aye. Okay, the meeting minutes are approved. Eight point two, recommendation to zoning board of review, oh, wait a minute, hold on. Skipped a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Number five, approval of the twenty-twenty-one meeting agendas. That is the schedule. Does anybody have any conflicting issues with the schedule? All right, so I don't have to make a motion on that, right? I can just approve this schedule? As written.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think I would have, I would have it by motion just because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Chuck it off.
We'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as the twenty-twenty-one schedule is written.
Motion approved by Carl.
I have a motion by Carl in a second.
By James.
Aye. Mr. Kenny? Any discussion on those minutes, on those meeting? Times? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Ms. Kalunian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye on that. Okay, ratifications of decisions. Calventown Road Solar. Owners Calventown Realty LLC, Rockwood Realty LLC, applicant Revity EPC LLC. The ratification is a decision of denial for master plan of a proposed five point three megawatt PC solar energy project AP eighty-five lots one and five point three and AP ninety-two lot one zone RR two, and the address is zero, zero Calventown Road. Can I hear a motion on the ratification of that?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, can you just say your name, whoever made the motion?
Motion by James Kenny.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Kenny, do I hear a second?
Second and a tie.
Second by.
Second by.
Second by Mr. Kenny.
Say I did.
All right, second by Ms. Lukowitz. And any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, I'll take a, I'll take a, a roll on that, Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye. We also have six point two, which I'm gonna, uh, out of consistency, it is a ratification, but I will be recusing myself on this. So if you want to take over, Mr. Kalunian?
I will. Uh, we're now on item six point two. The printer plat, owners Ronald and Lisa Flynn. Applicant same as above, this is for a ratification, the decision of conditional approval for a proposed two lot minus subdivision with one existing single-family residence. Assesses plat sixty, lot sixty-four in the RR twenty zone located at twenty-one Calventown Road. But I'll entertain a motion to with regard to the ratification.
A motion to accept the ratification.
Mr. Reyes has made a motion, a second please.
Second by James.
Second by James Kenny, do I have any discussion? Hearing none. I'll attempt a roll call. Let me get this thing so I can see everybody. Okay, uh, Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Am I missing anyone?
Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
And, and I also vote aye. So the motion carries six to nothing. Now we gotta find out how to get Flynn back on.
There he is.
There he is.
All set.
Come here. Okay, we have a green setting. For Green Farm Estates. Uh, it's seven point one, its owner North Road Land Company LLC, applicant is the same. It's a bond setting for the amount of eight hundred and forty thousand for an approved final plan of a seventeen lot residential single-family major subdivision with street creation. AP twenty-four lots twenty-six and thirty-one, and it's zoned RR twenty, it's on Old North Road. Anybody have any questions on this bond setting?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make one statement, when you read it in the, um, off the agenda, I believe it said eight hundred and forty thousand, I believe there was a last minute change due to some, um, uh, changes made by the town engineer and the developer. So the actual number, if you were to look at the, um, the piece of paper that you were given is eight hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And that was split up into two phases, phase one was four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Phase two was three hundred and forty-one dollars, thirty hun, three hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, so the bond, the bond setting, uh, is the amount of, total amount of eight forty-one, two forty. Uh, the first phase was four ninety-nine, four thirty, and the second phase is three forty-one, eight-ten. Can I get a motion on that bond setting?
I'll make a motion to approve the bond setting for Green Farm Estates, this is Rick Kalunian.
Mr. Flynn, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, he's also asking to approve phases one and two here this evening as part of that. So, um, if the board saw, you know, see the project, there was also a sheet with a phase one and two, because he will be phasing the project.
Yes. Okay, uh, so.
I'll address it.
We'll also add phase one and two to that, on that, uh, on that approval.
Yeah, to approve the bond, um, in, in the total amount of eight hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and to approve the subdivision to be constructed in two phases with phase one being lot numbers one to four and fifteen to seventeen. The bond for that will be four hundred and ninety-nine thousand and four hundred and thirty dollars, and phase two will be lots five through fourteen, and the bond amount for that is three hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, I had a motion, do I have a second?
Second by James Kenny.
Take a second by Mr. Anderson. Uh, any, any more discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Ayes.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye. So that, that, that has been approved. Uh, next is number eight, recommendation to the zoning board of review, eight point one, recommendation to the zoning board for special use permit. Owner Joseph Shaw, applicant same, applicant is seeking a special use permit for dimensional variance to construct a five hundred and seventy-six square, square foot garage, five feet, eight inches from the property line where fifty foot is required. AP three sixteen lot eighty-five zone RR three, and it is on forty-one eighty-six Flat River Road, anybody here representing that applicant?
Yes, I am. This is Jim Calderon, professional land surveyor, South County Survey Company.
Okay, Jim.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Flynn, members of the board. Um, you kind of spelled it out for me, but I'm presenting to you a, uh, application for Joseph Shaw, forty-one eighty-six Flat River Road, uh, seeking a special use permit and dimensional variance to construct said five hundred and seventy-six square foot garage. Um, he is in the RR three zone, this is a non-conforming lot of record. I performed a class one boundary survey and a class three data accumulation survey of the property. Property consists of two point zero five acres, and the sideline setback in the zone, uh, per the section two fifty-five, eight ninety, non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements is fifty feet. Uh, the existing structure is, uh, twenty-two point seven feet from the property line, and due to the presence of a septic system to the west and a wetland complex to the south, um, a, an attached garage can really only be constructed on the easterly side of the property. So what he's proposing here is a one and a half car garage, eighteen feet wide by the depth of the house roof height, uh, to match the existing structure, and that does leave you with a five point eight, it's not five feet, eight inches, but five point eight foot setback from the easterly property line.
You answered, you answered a few of my questions, I was gonna ask, like, I saw the septic on the right.
Yep.
I didn't know how far the wetlands were back in the south.
Yeah, there is a fifty foot perimeter wetland associated with that wetland, and it comes right to the back of the house.
And it's already a non-conforming lot of record, correct?
That's correct. And, um, also, you know, the purpose of the garage, there's a, there's a loft space above, uh, for storage, and the purpose of the garage is for obviously a vehicle and also for construction equipment for the owner's landscape construction company.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on this application?
And if I may, the owner is here as well.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, hi.
Have we heard any, this is Mr. Kenny, have we heard anything from the abutters, uh, particularly Chris and Sarah Wheeler, who live right next door? Uh, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
No, we haven't heard anything, and, and, um, Jim, they, because this stage, we, we're strictly an advisory opinion here. Um, they probably were not even aware that we were having a meeting here, here this evening. Okay. So they would only get notified at the zoning board stage of approval. So, um, they have not reached out to the planning department at this time. Okay, thank you.
Right, right, and this is just a recommendation.
Right, Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I just would like to add that, um, to the, to the director's comments, uh, those, those abutters will get notice at the zoning board hearing.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. DiAgostino.
I, I. Go ahead, Mr. Kalunian.
Um, I just wanted to know, uh, you know, we've got a visual photograph here, um, for the applicant, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the planning director's report, but what are your plans as far as, uh, excavation, assuming that the floor of the garage is going to be roughly, uh, at the same elevation as the uh, top of the foundation on the house, as far as the grade up to the abutters property? Uh, any plans for retaining wall, any type of a buffer at all within the, within the five feet?
Uh, yeah, if I could, uh, yeah, so there is, uh, we're gonna put a wall, a retaining wall there. Um, Chris and Sarah are, uh, we're good friends, and we've talked, and they're gonna, you know, um, basically, they've, they've said I could go as far as I want, and they'll gladly, you know, attend any, uh, meeting or hearing and write a, um, you know, uh, a letter, um, for the variance or whatnot, but, uh, you're pretty much gonna put a retaining wall up there, and there will be a buffer zone between the garage and the retaining wall.
Right, so is the retaining wall going to be on the property line so that you can get around the back of your house, or are you gonna have steps to go up, so you can get around the side of your house?
Uh, I was, I, yeah, I, I was gonna leave, um, a small buffer zone to the left of there, I wasn't gonna put it right on the property line.
What, the reason I'm raising the issue, and it's just food for thought, they're, they're your neighbors today. Um, you or they may not be the two abutters in the future, and to avoid any issues with, you know, having to encroach on the neighbor's property to get to the backyard, things like that, you, you just might want to take that into consideration. As, as the director pointed out, we're just an advisory board, that is an extremely, um, close, uh, could, could, you know, close to the profit line type construction, but I understand the constraints, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, you might want to, you know, make it so that you can pass on, come up with something so that you can pass on that side of the garage. Um, e- either on top of a retaining wall with steps from the driveway, or build a retaining wall back fur- further enough that you've got, you know, the four or five feet you need to clear and get into the backyard from that side, and, and still have the garage, because, I mean, looking at the picture, it looks like you're gonna have to add to the driveway over in that area as it is, and I can, I can see from here, it looks like their properties maybe four or five feet higher than, than yours. Um, so just, if you just take that into advisement, thank you.
I, I appreciate that, um, and there is also access on the right-hand side to the backyard, um, I can go around the property edge to go around the, the septic and leach field, so it could be accessible from the right side if needed to be.
Yeah, I, I understand you can get to the backyard, I'm talking about, you have to do any maintenance on that side of your structure, you know?
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that.
But also, if I can add to that, I'm reading my director's report that is always well done, um, there's a concern on the runoff, if you're gonna capture that, because there's a, there's a difference in grade there, so you're gonna put a wall up, but there's still gonna be water coming in, is there a way for you to capture that so it doesn't flood your area?
Uh, yes, so I'll capture that with, with a drainage system, um, most likely some, some cleanup boxes, uh, or some lineal drainage, um, we'll capture it, and then I'll run it out into like a dry well, um, you know, or a barrel system, uh, whi- whichever I'll need, but the, there's room to do that, so I, I obviously don't want to flood my own area either.
Right. Okay, anybody else have any, uh, anything to say on this project before I move?
Mr. Chair, Glenn, Glenn Anderson.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Uh, so Mr. Shaw, you know, I, I know that house, you guys did a great job with that since, uh, what, four years now you've been in there?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
No, you turned it around, it's really nice. Uh, just seems to me, you mean, I don't know, we're just getting real close, we're just splitting a lot of hairs here. I get a little worked up over it. Uh, it's, I understand the garage for some equipment, and if you would have put it, say, in the front of the house, maybe aesthetically it wouldn't look good. Maybe put the dirt driveway or something on the side of the house to keep your equipment, I don't know. But every, you know, the, the, the board made excellent suggestions that you really gotta take into consideration, because, I mean, this is, this is pretty tight, you're threading the needle, right, you know that.
Should, should I need to make the garage a little smaller to, you know, accommodate that, I, it could be done as well, I mean, it was just the proposed, uh, size, uh, that I'm hoping for, but should I need to make it smaller? Mainly, I just, uh, I just need some storage for my cars and some tools, and, you know, I don't even, I'd like my, some equipment in there, but if I can't fit it, it's not the end of the world for me, uh, but more importantly, definitely for car and storage, um, you know, I've, I've got a part of a basement that's considered crawl space that I was using for storage for quite some time, and well, as you know, there's a lot of mice out here. I, uh, I deal with problems with that, so I was really hoping to try to get some space for the car and, you know, add some value to the property as well.
I get it, I get it, no, like, no, so far you've done a great job with that piece of property.
Thank you very much.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, recommendation to zoning board for special use permit. Anybody want to make a motion to approve or not approve this project?
Hang on a minute. Mr. Chairman, I have concerns about making a favorable recommendation, I, I, again, I just, from a planning perspective, I, I, I'm not so sure. I mean, if the zoning board wants to grant it, I'm not gonna make an unfavorable recommendation, but, um, I, I think there's some other things that need to be considered, and especially based on the last statement. Um, if there's a way to narrow the garage and go deeper to provide the storage that's needed, as opposed to expanding out that close to the property line, maybe at, at least getting it down to eight, eight to ten feet, I, I don't know what the proposed width is on the new one unless I look through the plan, so, that.
Well, Mr. Kalunian, in the past, we have made no recommendation, so that's always an option too.
That, that's what, that was the point I was trying to make.
Well, if I can't get a motion, then I guess we'll have no recommendation on this project. I'm not hearing any motion one way or the other on it, so, uh, I guess we're gonna call this, uh, no recommendation from the planning board, one way or the other on this project. So Mr. Shaw, you can still go to zoning, um. I don't hear any motion, so I, I can't do a motion myself, so I'm, I'm saying that we're, we're gonna have no recommendation on this project at this point.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, uh, eight point two, we have another recommendation to zoning board of review, and this is also for a special use permit. Uh, it's, uh, owner is Ross Palatier and Michelle Palatier, applicant the same. I'm seeking a dimensional variance and a special use permit to construct a twenty-six by twenty-four additional uh, addition on the northerly side of the home, and expanding the existing garage from a twenty-four by twenty-two to a twenty-six by thirty-five. The requested relief is twelve feet on the northerly addition side yard setback, two feet on the southerly side yard setback, and seven feet on the southerly, on the southerly addition front yard setback, it's AP three twenty-three lot one ninety-three zone RR three, and the address is forty-four Allison Avenue. Uh, is anybody here for the applicant?
We are. Right here.
Hi, Mr. Palatier, and Mr. Palatier, how are you? Can you just give us a quick, uh, presentation on, on what you want to do?
Sure, so, um, we'd like to.
Sorry, I'm at home, you have a dog.
Talk to.
He's a cute dog.
He's gonna make the presentation?
Uh, we'd like to build a small addition, um, this would allow us for a new bedroom closet and bathroom to our, um, small ranch house. Um, after the addition, our home would still be a three-bedroom house, because we would take, um, one of the, the master bedroom now, knock the wall down, that would become more of a dining room area. Um, and we also would like to increase the size of our garage, because it currently only fits, uh, one car plus stuff, uh, so we'd like to make it into a three-car. Um, as far as this, the additions, like you said, the addition would be twenty-four, uh, twenty-six by twenty-four, yeah, um, so it's twenty-six feet deep and twenty-four foot wide, I'm talking about the solid yellow box there, um, on the left side. That would be on, um, that one needs uh, twelve feet of relief from, um, and will be thirty-five feet from the property line. The other side is the existing garage, which we would actually knock down the existing garage, because the floor is not in the best shape, and it would just be easier, so we'd knock down the, um, twenty-four by twenty-two garage and add a thirty-five by twenty-six. Um, and the relief that we need on that side is two feet from the property line, but it's only, it, the house isn't square in the lot, so it's two feet from the, this front corner here, and then by the time you go in the back, it's actually, it doesn't need a variance, so it's a small pie shape, and seven feet is from the street.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, uh, anybody on the board have any questions on this project?
Um, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
When you're looking at the sketch, uh, the yard, large yellow box that's gonna become the bathroom addition, uh, bedroom, bathroom addition, at the top of the sketch, it says garage entrance underneath.
Yeah, so, um, if you go, if you scroll down a little bit, if you, the house is built onto a hill, so, um,
oh.
Oh, actually, go back up.
If you can go into the sketch, the bottom pencil sketch, just above this one.
I think it's just above it. So the house is built into a hill, we have a walkout basement, so this would be the back, back of the house, um. As you can see right now, there's the existing doors with the three windows, that addition with the, uh, box off to the side is, would be a garage door, basically like a oversized one-car door, so we could fit a boat in there, um, lawnmower stuff, um. Basically, if we're doing the addition, we figure might as well dig out the basement instead of building it onto a slab, make it a little bit more room without changing the footprint, and it would be more appealing than a wall.
Okay, so when you're looking at the front of the house, you're gonna be basically ground level with the bedroom, bathroom, and closet. And then when you go around back, you're gonna have like a garage underneath.
Exactly, yeah, so from the front of the house, it'll stay, still stay a one-level ranch sim, um, house, but from the back, which it already looks like a two-story house because of the walkout basement.
Okay, and then the right side where you're knocking down the garage, that's where you're gonna have the extended, uh, three-car garage.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Because you want to change the roof line and the trusses and stuff aren't in the best shape.
Okay, understood, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is that on Johnson's pond?
Yes.
Yes.
You're walking out to the pond, very nice.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Did, can we?
Say anything on this project?
I, I do, is my mic on, okay. Can I see the other elevation? With the, with the.
The front yard?
Yeah, that was it. Okay, so. Okay, so you're adding and the thirty-five feet that you're adding to the other side, what's that, a large garage and a small garage, it looks like?
Yeah, it's a, it'll be a three-car garage, and we'll just, instead of doing three separate doors, we would do a bigger door in a small door to the side. Like a one-car door and a two-car.
And that's what's triggering the it, it's basically eighteen feet from the street, and what's the sideline setback over there, I, I'm sorry, I can't read the plan.
Two, we're gonna be in, in the setback by two feet.
Okay, so thirty-five feet required in your thirty-three. Okay, so thirty-five feet required and you're thirty-three feet.
Yes, it's only two feet. It's just the front corner of the garage is barely over the setback line in the front corner of what we're proposing.
What's the front corner setback supposed to be? I could go back and look at the chart. I just had it up. Okay, the minimum's supposed to be eight. The minimum is supposed to be twenty-five and you're gonna be eighteen.
Yep.
Okay, I, I, I got it. I, I guess I got kind of the same question I had as I did in the, on the last application. I, I know you said the two, this wasn't big enough for two cars. This is an oversized garage as it is, and there's a door on the side. I'm just trying to figure out why.
There's stairs going into the basement in this garage, so it takes up. Um a lot of the room on the inside.
Oh yeah, you do, when you add on that, if we go back to the elevation, are you also adding a second floor on that?
No.
No, no, we just kind of. Spun the roof a little bit to make it look um a little more appealing, kind of um giving it a peek to.
Okay, that's the back. See, okay, okay. All right. Okay, well. Kind of had this, I'll, I'll see, we'll, we'll defer to the zoning board, but I, I think um.
Are you all set, Rick?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Yeah, I, I actually liked the, the change of the, the front of, uh on the different roof lines. It, it, you did a nice job on that sketch. It looks nice.
That was, that was all, Michelle.
I, I guessed that. Anybody else have anything for, for or against this project?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Palatier, um how deep is the slope behind your house, behind that garage?
I'm sorry, how deep is what?
The slope down to the water.
Um, so.
It's fairly level. Um we did have it assessed um by a surveyor, um determined that um.
We're out of the flood zone.
We're not in the flood zone or anything.
Do you mean from the house to the water or do you mean from the front?
From, from the front to the right. It's gonna be a three-car garage.
Yeah.
Oh yes, there is a hill there. There's a slight hill there.
It's probably six.
Probably six feet, yeah.
I'm just trying to think. If I stand there, I can, I can see over it. It's not.
I don't think there would be a problem.
I, I don't think so because, well, it's only um. We're only adding on eleven feet from the existing, what's already there. Um it's just that we're knocking the existing one down. We're currently twenty-four feet wide by thirty. Um and we're gonna go to thirty-five. So it'd be just a. There would be a wall. It'd be the foundation wall, which we would um decorate nice and put. Uh plants around and stuff. So it's not like it'd be a. Ugly cement wall, shall we?
Okay.
Anybody else? On the board who'd like to comment on this project? Okay, hearing none, uh entertain a, a motion. For uh recommendation to zoning for a special use permit.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson.
Go ahead.
Uh I'll make a favorable recommendation for uh special use permit and dimensional uh dimension variance. Uh to go to zoning. Um this is uh for the only applicant, uh Ross and Michelle Palatier, forty-four Allison Avenue. AP three twenty-three lot one ninety-three. And uh based this. Conditions. Uh based on the in, ingress and egress, the property has permanent physical access. To Allison Avenue and the construction of the proposed expansion will not alter that or affect the functionality of the existing driveway. Uh there's sufficient off-street parking. Utilities are already pre-existing. Uh as far as general compatibility, the abutting properties of surrounding neighborhood are all primary single-family residential. Uh it does con, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And granted, this special use permit and dimensional variance will not affect the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. And I'd like to incorporate the director's report in my motion.
Okay, do I hear a second on that motion?
I second.
Oh, go ahead.
Second by Ms. Lukewitz. So any discussion? All right, hearing none, uh Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Lukewitz.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have another recommendation to the zoning board of review for again, another special use permit. Owner is Zach Eaton, applicant same. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and a special use permit to construct the thirty-by-sixty garage. Twenty-eight feet from the westerly side property line where thirty feet is required. It's lot AP seventy-four. Uh AP seventy-four lot nine zone RR two, and it's located on four nineteen Reed Schoolhouse Road. Anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, sir, me.
Okay, Zach, would you just give the board a, a quick uh overview of what you want to do?
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to construct a thirty-by-sixty garage. On the, on the left side of the property when looking at the house from Reed Schoolhouse Road. Um it's gonna come within twenty-eight feet of the side of property line instead of the required. Yeah, the garage needs to be here because by moving the required uh. By meeting the required rear ninety-foot setbacks. And um inside thirty-foot setbacks, the front of the proposed garage would end up in the northeast corner of the building, cutting into the raised front lawn. And I have to cut a, a walkway around it. Problem is, is that the raised front lawn is the lead field for the house. So moving the garage back. Would um, would cut into the usable backyard space and be, and be further than the uh, I'm sorry, be closer than the required ninety-foot setback. So by placing the garage here, it also leads to it extending past the front of the house. But it'll still be back by a hundred and nineteen feet from the uh, from the front. So there's no. Front setback issue. It's just really the side and the fact that it goes past the front of the house. It's no longer the side um or rear.
Okay, so you're looking for two feet. Um on that side.
Yes, sir.
Anybody on the board have any questions? All right, I'm hearing none on this project. Uh. Anybody would like to entertain a motion on this? For a special use permit to zoning.
Chairman Flynn, this is Mr. Kenny. I'll make a recommendation for a favorable motion to zoning. Owner applicant Zach Eaton, four nineteen Reed Schoolhouse Road. AP seventy-four lot nine. Um. The recommendation for a dimensional variance of two feet from the side yard setback. The property has a permanent physical access to Reed Schoolhouse Road and the construction of the proposed garage will not. Alter or affect the functionality of the existing driveway. It has sufficient off-street parking. Utilities are pre-existing. The abutting properties in the surrounding neighborhood are primarily single-family residences. The proposal is consistent with the concrete comprehensive plan. The granting of the special use permit and dimensional variances will not affect the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. And I would like to incorporate the planning staff report. Uh the planning directors' report into my recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, second and any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Lukewitz.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye on this project. So the uh recommendation has been granted. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a public informational meeting. For continued from September twenty-third, third, twenty-twenty. It's a master plan. Residents at Boyd Brook Comprehensive Permit Application. Owner, Greenlight Farm LLC. Applicant, Greenlight Farm LLC. It's a proposed ninety-six unit residential developed with a minimum of twenty-five percent low to moderate income housing. It's AP three thirty lots thirty and eighty-one, zone RR three rural residential, and that is located on Town Farm Road. Mr. Paglari, you are here.
I am, sir.
Uh first, I'd like to uh thank everybody for their patience because this was on the agenda for last month and it got continued because of time. So I know a lot of people were waiting to talk. And I appreciate everybody waiting for this month to continue this. So Mr. Paglari, do you want to start with um? Start your presentation?
I, I do. I, I have a preparatory question as I look at participants on this. Is Mr. Studley an alternate on those planning board?
No, no.
No? Okay.
Well, Mr. Studley is the associate director of the planning board.
Okay, thank you. Um for the record, my name is John Paglari, B A G L I A R I N I. And I am the attorney representing the owners of the two parcels. Greenlight Farm LLC and Mr. Thomas Miozy. The property is a vacant lot in the seven-hundred block of Town Farm Road. I believe it is approximately seventy-one acres of land. The current use of the property is a private airstrip. What has history with this property? It used to be a gravel pit and um we'll get into that a little bit later. The application before you is a comprehensive permit application. It has been certified by complete, uh as complete. By the town administrative officer on September second. And has met Rhode Island Housing's criteria. And Rhode Island Housing issued a letter of eligibility dated July thirty-first of this year. As you're aware, a comprehensive permit application vests all local authority for boards and commissions with this planning commission. Notice was given according to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Uh Mr. Crossman is in possession of my affidavit of notice and the green card. Uh mailings that were returned. The applicant has provided to the town planner the resume. And presentations of its four expert witnesses this evening. Um the four experts that will be uh speaking briefly are Mr. Timothy Behan, a uh. Professional engineer with Commonwealth Engineering. He's the site engineer and designer. Mr. Scott Rabidou, a uh of Natural Resource Services. He is a professional wet, wet wind scientist. Mr. Bob Ferrari of Northeast Water Solutions. He is a hydrologist. And Mr. Herman Peralta, a professional engineer with Beta Group, who will be our traffic engineer this evening. Our goal is master plan approval for the comprehensive permit application. I'd like to start with the big picture. There's an affordable high housing crisis in the state of Rhode Island and in the town of Coventry. The current COVID economy has exacerbated the affordability gap. There's a lot of people that can't afford and keep up with the housing prices as they continue to climb. Right now, if anybody uh follows real estate in the town of Coventry is. As soon as a well-priced house goes on the market, it's off the market. It sells quickly. The gap and the problem is, is that. Young professionals, uh. Children in their twenties and the elderly cannot afford to live in Coventry. There's not that many options for them. And persons with disabilities have even fewer options. Um a purchaser of a, a house that meets the. Criteria for an affordable house in Coventry. There's slim pickings. There's less than twenty houses on the market under three hundred thousand dollars in the town. And if you look at those, the, uh most of them need substantial rehabilitation. In order to make them livable and unfortunately. The affordability gap doesn't give those persons a lot of resources to do the renovations. So what our project is doing is offering twenty-four new construction. Homes that fill the affordability gap. The state passed a law many years ago that sets as its goal that each community is supposed to have. Ten percent of their housing stock as affordable housing. The town of Coventry. Years ago, back in two thousand four, two thousand five. Addressed the affordability issue um in their. Comprehensive Plan Housing Element, and they adopted, and it was the affordable housing plan. In addition, the town council, and it's under that ordinance that our application is here this evening. It dictates the requirements of what we need to present to you. It's onerous. It, it's actually more onerous than if we came in with a normal major land development project. Many draft documents were required, budgets. Um there were, there were many hurdles to get a certificate of completion on this project. But let's go back to that era. In two thousand and five, when the town's housing uh plan was adopted. The town had three-point-eight-five percent of its housing stock qualified as affordable. The goal's ten. If you read your plan. It says in the year twenty-twenty. Based on all the recommendations of the plan. That you will be at eight-point-six-one percent this year. You were at three-point-eight-five. Based on the plan, we're supposed to be at eight-point-six-one. The new numbers were released approximately two weeks ago. And the town of Coventry is at five-point-three-five percent. You're at three percent under. What your own affordable housing play. Plan projected you would be at this time. I'm not gonna go into why. That, that's a, that's an evening discussion of. What went wrong over the years um to do that. I've got my thoughts on it. Um but suffice to say. Many of the recommendations of the plan were never implemented by the town. And. If I was to give any guidance to the town. Your planning staff needs to update several of the documents that I've referenced. And it's impossible to do in their normal course of daily business. The planning commission should advocate to the town uh council manager. That some planning consultants are needed to assist because. These documents are woefully out of date. And that's a problem when you try to manage a project of this scope. And I know the board. Boards aware of this, but I'll make a statement for the record. If you don't have ten percent of your stock as affordable. It gives the applicant a high ground at the State Housing Appeals Board. And that's not a good place for the town to be. So. When I've gone through everything. I think some consultants need to come in and review what's on the books because it's deficient. And I'll leave that there. As stated, the site currently houses a two-thousand-four-hundred. Linear private airstrip running north to south. The property used to be a gravel bank. And those rights were surrendered when we received permission from the zoning board. Put private airstrip in as a special use permit. So right now. Seasonal use of the private airstrip happens. Um and according from that mistake. The original approval limited it to no more than three planes per day or housed on the site. It was a little vague. The way it was written. Um however. However, it's an active, working, well-maintained airstrip that sits in the middle of this area. The proposal, the proposed project, if approved, will take that use which I guess the the technical term in planning jargon is a um is a lulu. A lulu is a locally unwanted land use. Um, the lulu would go away if the the residential project that's proposed is approved. There is a, an existing master plan approval on the site for sixteen four-bedroom homes that will be abandoned by the comprehensive permit. The reality of the situation is that the sixteen lot development is uneconomical due to all the requirements of the planning regulations. Just too expensive to build that project for that few number of homes. And that's why the decision was made to go with the comprehensive permit. Our application was reviewed by the town fire marshal and we have addressed their concerns and have stating that we are uh in compliance with their wishes at this time. Mr. Chair, without objection, I'd like, I've ended my prefatory comments. I'd like to get into my expert witnesses. I have asked that they all be brief um because they've submitted written reports and all the application and that information is available to everybody and there's no reason to be redundant. I'm not looking to make this a multi-hour presentation. What's the board pleasure as far as recognizing my four individuals as expert witnesses? Well, they're I I don't believe the town swears in their witnesses, but their resumes are part of the record, so I'm okay if that's your procedure.
I believe that's the procedure, yes.
All right.
They just put their name and their address.
Yep. Uh, my first witness will be Mr. Tim Behan. Tim, could you state your name and and company address for the record, please?
Yes, it's uh Timothy Behan, professional engineer uh with the firm Commonwealth Engineers, four hundred Smith Street, Providence, Rhode Island.
And Mr. Behan is going to testify as an expert witness in engineering and site design. Tim, I'm going to give you latitude to describe the project from an engineering perspective, please.
Sure. If you could. I would like to come through the the drawings and I'll go over the existing conditions plan, the proposed plan and uh end it with a few comments. So if if I can have the ability to share my screen, I'd appreciate it, or if if Russ has um some drawings to throw up there, either way.
I'm working on it, Tim. Give me a sec.
Sure.
Great. Tim, I can ask you a few questions while we're waiting for that.
Sure.
Are the proposed utilities above ground or underground?
The proposed utilities will be underground.
Okay, we have, we have a plan. I'll give it back to you.
I I think this is Russ. He's in charge, right?
Yeah, what do you, which plan do you like?
Uh, let's start with the existing. Just go through the existing conditions plan. Can you zoom in? Okay, yeah.
Is that adequate?
Yeah, yeah, that that's fine. It gives the rough area. Just to give you bearings, um the the road to the left side of the screen is Town Farm Road. You could see Mile Road uh uh on top and uh Autobahn Lane to the kind of the the bottom right there. Uh, the subject site is uh just under seventy-one acres in size. It's uh zoned R three and the zone R two line is just to the south on the other side of Boyd Brook. Boyd Brook runs along our easterly property line and um is uh associated with uh several wetlands varying in and setback distances from fifty feet from ponds. There's sections in there with a hundred-foot riverbank wetlands and there's also some sections with two hundred-foot riverbank wetlands. Uh, that's essentially that property line is the majority of the the wetland resources. There's one pocket wetlands, very small, somewhat near the center of the property. I'm not sure if you can identify that, Russ. Right in there, that tiny one. That's a small wetland and that's less than uh um the three acres in size. There's no perimeter wetland associated with that or buffers. Uh, topography uh generally goes from the north to the northwest portion of the site is the highest and slopes down towards the south-southeast. Uh, I'd like to bring to everybody's attention, there is a landlocked, landlocked lot. The tongue twister. Um, at the corner of our property. Yep, you're right there, right there, Russ. That lot has no access currently. And we'll talk about that shortly in the proposed plan. And a- as um Mr. Paglari mentioned, the site is currently partially developed. There is an airstrip, Russ. If you want to just kind of move your mouse, start, see that line in there? That's where the airstrip is now. And obviously on both sides of that, there's some cleared uh vegetation associated with that and a roadway which goes off of Town Farm Road. And the last bit of information I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention is the cemetery. There is a cemetery on site. It's uh on the lower left uh area of the subject, a little higher, or you're right in there to the left. Right there. I think it's right there. Yep, that's the cemetery. There's an existing cemetery. So tha- that takes care of it for existing conditions. If we can go to um the proposed plan. Proposed plan, I'm just going to describe, um, we have our primary access off of Town Farm Road. It starts off as a boulevard type entrance, one way in, one way out. Each one of those roadways would be uh twenty feet away. And then it, then it hits uh two loop areas. The first loop has some homes around it with some stormwater in the center. And then the larger loop in the back has additional homes and what's in the center area there is the proposed uh septic system leach field. Um, there's ninety-six detached units, so there's no duplexes or multifamily housing here. These are detached, single-family units. Uh, each on this plan are depicted as twenty-four foot wide by thirty-eight foot deep with a twenty-foot by six-foot front porch. Uh, ninety of the units will be two-bedroom and six of the units would be one-bedroom. Parking, each unit has two parking spaces in the front and we also have overflow parking throughout the site. Uh, fifty-five extra overflow parking spaces for, so the total parking ratio of the entire development is two, two-point-six spaces per unit, which exceeds the standard of two. Um, we're also providing that an access uh easement and right away to the landlocked lot and the upper right, Russ, that that later that area, that's an access easement going to that landlocked lot, which we spoke about previously. We have proposed three phases for construction. And you can see the phase lines on the drawing. It says phase one, phase two, phase three. Those are the three phases we anticipate for this project. We have open space. There's over fifty acres of open space that's going to remain. Um, the stormwater management's uh scattered throughout the site. Those are the gr- uh blue little pond-type areas we show within the green areas and those will mitigate any increase in runoff uh from pre-development rates and be designed in accordance with the DEM standards. Potable water system is going to be uh supplied by public wells in the lower right corner. There's uh two pub- public wells proposed at that location and in the center of the large loop, we have our septic system uh drain field, which will be uh designed in accordance with DEM standards. Uh, all our limits of all our disturbance and the limited disturbance is outside of any uh wetland setback. So there's no significant environmental issues here at all. The wetland permit should be very straightforward. And we mentioned we coordinated the the design of the uh fire cisterns with the fire marshal. He's required one ten-thousand gallon fire cistern for each of the phases. And these three uh cisterns will improve the firefighting capabilities um throughout the area since there's thirty thousand gallons just in this development alone. Uh, soil erosion control uh will be designed in accordance with the latest DEM standards and also the town's ordinance. Uh, so the wetlands will be protected as well as uh abiding property owners. And all utilities will be underground. Uh, but that's all I had on my portion of the um presentation.
Mr. Mr. Behan, is it your expert testimony that the design of the project will meet the uh standards of the Coventry subdivision regulations and utilize best management practices from an engineering perspective?
Yes, this will be designed to um the maximum extent possible. Uh, the subdivision standards, we do have a list of waivers we have attached to our uh project submission. Uh, so there will be some exceptions noted.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Behan at this time. Miss, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I'll I'll run through and then I'm presuming the board will ask questions as they seem fit. Or do you?
Yes, uh, do your presentation and then at the, I'm I'm taking notes as all the board members are, then we'll ask questions and then we'll uh open up public hearing.
I I have with me my expert in um in wetlands, Mr. Rabidou. Um, I, I think Mr. Behan touched on and showed you the locus of the wetlands. And without objection, I'm going to hold Mr. Rabidou in reserve uh to answer any questions the board may have so that we're not um repetitive. Because basically he's going to go through the wetlands and say, this is where the buffers are and you know, we're not disturbing them. So I'll, I'm not going to call him as an expert at this time. But if the board understands he is available to answer any questions regarding wetlands or the bro.
Understood.
Uh, next I ask that uh Mr. Herman Peralta be allowed to testify as an expert in traffic. Herman, could you give your name, company, and address for the record, please?
Yes, Herman Peralta with Beta Group, seven oh one George Washington Highway, Lincoln, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Mi- Mr. Peralta, uh, did your office conduct the traffic study uh on behalf of our client?
Correct.
All right. I'm going to let you get to it. If you could explain to the board what your findings were from a traffic and safety perspective, please.
Sure. Uh, good evening. Again, my name is Herman Peralta. I'm a senior traffic engineer with Beta Group. Uh, I'm just going to briefly discuss the main elements of the other traffic study, um including uh safety and operations. Uh, but before I get into that, I'd like to briefly discuss the task uh that was completed as part of our traffic study and to be able to prepare a report. Um, number one, we conducted an inventory of the physical roadway characteristics of the servicing roadways. Uh, that includes Town Farm Road and Flat River Road uh in reference to safety and operations. Uh, we collected traffic data, including manual turning movement counts at the intersection of Town Farm Road uh with Flat River Road, um including uh obtaining record traffic information from RIDOT. Uh, we then obtained uh crash data information uh from the local police department uh just to deter, to determine if there are any safety uh issues uh within the project area. Um, we then estimated uh the future traffic volumes that will be generated by the proposed residential development uh use, using the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And then we analyzed the the data we collected um and evaluated the existing and future conditions and made recommendations uh for mitigation uh if necessary uh to provide for safe and efficient access to the um proposed residential neighborhood. Uh, as it relates to the safety analysis part of the uh study, uh we specifically looked at the stopping site distances at the two-study intersection that includes the site driveway uh on Town Farm Road and in the intersection of Town Farm Road uh with Flat River Road. Uh, based on our field investig- uh investigation, uh both study intersections uh provide uh sufficient stopping site distances. Uh, in addition, as I previously mentioned, uh we obtained crash data information from the local police department uh for the latest full three-year period between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen along Town Farm Road. Uh, so based on our review of the crash data, uh there were a total fifteen crashes that occurred within that three-year study period uh for an average of about five year. Uh, just to summarize a little bit of the uh the accident data, uh there was uh two accidents that occurred at the intersection of Town Farm Road with Flat River Road, uh which which were both minor rear-end collisions. Uh, there were no uh accidents that occurred along the uh at the intersection of Flat River, I'm sorry, Town Farm Road with Maple Valley Road. Uh, and the rest of the accidents, which is about thirteen, uh occurred along a section of Town Farm Road between Maple Valley Road and Flat River Road uh with the majority involving single-vehicle crashes uh that could be attributed to multiple conditions, uh including roadway conditions, um collisions with an animal, uh distracted drivers, and also a couple of DUIs. So based on the evaluate, evaluation of the existing roadway physical features and the review of the um crash data, um, it does not appear that any significant um physical roadway uh deficiencies exist within the defined study um area. However, we do recommend um for vegetation along the site property frontage to be uh trimmed and or cleared. Uh, this is to enhance the visibility of the um uh, this is to enhance the sightlines for vehicles exiting the site driveways and also to um enhance the visibility of the site driveway uh for motorists traveling uh along Town Farm Road. Uh, in addition, uh due to the um higher uh volume of traffic that would be associated with the proposed residential neighborhood uh compared to a single-family driveway which is prevalent along Town Farm Road, uh an intersection warning sign could be placed east and west of the site driveway. Uh, this is just to alert the motorists uh the potential of uh turning traffic to and from the uh site driveway. As it relates to the um operational analysis uh part of the study, uh we analyze again both the existing and future conditions. Um, under the existing conditions, uh Town Farm Road was found to service less than two hundred vehicles per hour during the daily peak period uh based on the traffic uh we collected. Uh, to put that into perspective, that's less than fifteen percent of the road capacity resulting in uh efficient operations along Town Farm Road. Uh, again, we then estimated the traffic volumes for the residential project using the ITE Trip Generation Manual uh for this project. The single-family housing land use was reviewed in developing the um the site-related trips. Uh, this land use resulted in a conservative estimate as a single-family home in this rural setting typically has three to four bedrooms compared to the proposed residential project where the single-family units will be um limited to two bedrooms, excuse me. Typically condominium uh condominium-style townhouse uh style residences generate um thirty to forty percent less trips than a single-family home. And under the uh future conditions, uh were the trips uh that will be generated by the residential development um which was added to the existing base volume, including um any background growth. Again, Town Farm Road was found to um service less than fifteen percent of the roadway capacity resulting in efficient operation along Town Farm Road and both uh both uh study intersections. Uh, it's also important to note, our traffic study considered um the full build-out of the site, um including phase one, two, and three. So in conclusion, uh so the, based on the data we collected on the servicing roadways and the um analysis completed as part of the study, um the the future conditions resulting from the proposed residential development will provide for adequate and safe access to a public street.
Thank you, Mr. Peralta. Um, is it your expert testimony that the level of service on Town Farm Road will be safe and that betterment such as street clearing along the road will improve safety and the general welfare of those traveling on Town Farm Road?
Correct.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Chair, my last expert is uh Bob Ferrari. Uh, Bob, if you could please introduce yourself, name, company name. please introduce yourself, name, company name and address, please.
Sure. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Robert F. Ferrari. I'm a registered professional engineer. Uh, my company is Northeast Water Solutions and we're located at five sixty-seven South County Trail in Exeter, Rhode Island.
And Mister Ferrari, you're going to be testifying as an expert witness in subsurface hydrology?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, John, you, you broke up on me there. I couldn't tell you said.
I said you'll be testifying as an expert in hydrology?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Bob, did you conduct a review, a study of this proposed development?
Yes, I did.
Could you please explain to the board what your findings were?
Sure. Um, just by means of starting, um, my work involved an assessment of the magnitude of the potential water demands for this proposed project. Um, we then examined the location of the site within the larger watershed region and then the localized watershed. Uh, we determined a site water balance and recharge and we assessed potential impacts on underlying and surrounding water resources and neighboring wells. Uh, I'll try to briefly summarize the report, uh, which was presented to the board. Uh, they stated earlier, there's proposed a maximum of ninety-six residences applying the standard values used by the state of Rhode Island. Uh, that would result in, at one hundred percent maximum build-out and occupancy which would be two persons per bedroom, um, an average daily demand of fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty gallons per day and a maximum daily demand, maximum one-day demand of twenty-one thousand three hundred and ninety gallons per day. And I want to stress, this is a worst-case analysis at maximum build-out and occupancy. Uh, the site uh, is located within the larger South Branch Patuxet River watershed, which is approximately seventy-two square miles. And it's one of four drainage basins within the larger Patuxet River watershed. The outlet, by the way, from Flat River Reservoir is effectively the headwater of the South Branch Patuxet River. The site is locally within the Boyd Brook sub watershed. And that sub watershed extends from directly north from Situate. Um, draining almost in a straight southerly direction, draining ultimately into Flat River Reservoir and it's one of uh, four brooks of any significance draining at the Flat River Reservoir from the north. The I, I, important fact feature of the South Branch of the Patuxet River watershed is it's about forty-one percent underlaid by sand and gravel deposits, stratified drift deposits. Um, and there are three major sand and gravel aquifers uh, within the South Branch, um, aqua, um, watershed, and they're all hydraulically interconnected. And this is an important consideration. Um, and by the way, sand and gravel aquifers have been studied extensively in this area and they have three to four times the recharge transmission compared to glacial till deposits. Uh, the site, uh, as was illustrated earlier, um, the site extends roughly north-south. The northeastern, so the northwestern and western side of the site is the highest elevation. And by the way, that, uh, that elevation up there is effectively a sub-basin divide between the Pierce Brook uh, sub watershed to the west and the Boyd Brook watershed immediately along the eastern side of the site. Um, the site grades down, uh, the topography, uh, in a east-southeast, uh, direction. Uh, most of the site drains towards Boyd Brook and the lower portion of the site will drain almost directly south uh, toward, towards both Boyd Brook and Flat River Reservoir. The site soils, uh, this is another important consideration. The upland soils tend to be, uh, can, uh, can and charlatan soils. They have, that, that's a glacial till, it's a meltout till. They have, um, low to moderate water transmission and infiltration. Uh, however, the lower areas of the site, uh, tend to be what's referred to as hinkley soils and merrimac soils as well as a few other, um, you know, minor components. They tend to be soils associated and overlying sand and gravel deposits and they have very high water transmissivity. Very high infiltration rates, very high transmission. Um, the soil recharge is substantial. Uh, numerous studies have been done, by the way, of the South Branch of the Patuxet watershed. And we determined site recharge, and again, this is conservatively estimated, it's using actually a lesser uh, annual precipitation that occurs, currently is occurring in the region. Um, we estimated, uh, natural onsite recharge. This is just the recharge occurring on this site as, um, almost fifty-four million gallons per year, which equates to about a hundred and forty-seven thousand gallons per day. Annualized average, if you will. Obviously, there's variability, uh, seasonally through the year. We also did a very conservative estimate of bedrock recharge. That's the water that's in the soils that ultimately uh, seeps down and infiltrates into the bedrock through fractures. We used a conservative allowance of only seven inches per year. Uh, that's seven inches out of approximately forty-nine inches per year of total precipitation. Um, and that gave us a natural bedrock recharge of about thirteen point four million gallons per year. Uh, that equates to about thirty-six thousand eight hundred gallons per day on an annualized average. Uh, another consideration here is how much water is, could be stored in the bedrock underlying just the site. We're not giving any credit for anything off-site, uh, to a depth of five hundred feet uh, with an allowance that an upper, the upper layer would have no water in it, uh, and using only point one percent porosity, which is a typical minimum used in New England for granitic bedrock. Uh, we're looking at about ten point six million gallons of water in that, in that bedrock stored in the bedrock. Now, you can't always access, access that water. But that gives you an opportunity with proper well development to access a significant portion of it potentially, depending on the fracturing that, that will be. We, um, we, we, we looked at average annual conditions, we looked at worst-case drought conditions both in the watershed and on the site. And we determined on the site a worst-case drought condition, which was actually studied extensively by USGS. Uh, that the minimum natural site recharge would be, uh, just under thirty-four thousand gallons per day um, of water coming in, and that would be a low-flow period in August during a drought. Um, our site water balance, uh, we have to factor in that they're using onsite wastewater disposal systems. Uh, with those systems, and this is, by the way, been studied in the South Branch Patuxet watershed. Study that was completed in two thousand and five, by the way. Um, that we have about eighty-five percent of the water extracted from the ground by a well system would end up going back into the ground uh, through the onsite wastewater disposal systems. Okay? So with that, uh, with an allowance for eighty-five percent recharge of extractions under a, the maximum build-out condition, um, our net extraction, meaning the water, all the water pumped out for, minus the water recharge back, our maximum extract, net extraction is two thousand one hundred and forty gallons per day. Uh, that two thousand one hundred and forty gallons per day is about one point five percent of the annual natural site recharge and less than six percent of the natural onsite bedrock recharge. Under drought conditions, uh, where there could be some lessening, some lowering of, of the groundwater table, it does affect uh, water and soils more so than water and bedrock, but it does affect water and bedrock. Uh, we would probably have to tap into some of the storage capacity in the bedrock. However, looking at that net demand, that's less than point zero two percent of our projected minimum bedrock storage. What this all means is that the anticipated impacts, or the potential impacts on uh, local water resources and neighboring wells should be, uh, minimal to none. Uh, the highest density of neighboring wells is immediately northeast of the site along Audubon Lane and roughly speaking, there's, I believe, approximately forty-two single-family houses on Audubon Lane, each with a private well. I studied the well drilling reports. I accessed, I believe, forty of them, studied them extensively. Um, those wells, by the way, are typically about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty feet apart. And, uh, where the proposed location is for the wells serving the proposed Boyd Brook, uh, residences community. Uh, minimum separation is about eight hundred feet. Interestingly enough, uh, in studying the, the wells drilled for Audubon Lane, what we found was that at the, uh, the southernmost portion, the houses along the southern side of Audubon Lane, the southern southeastern side, we were seeing depth to bedrock of anywhere from thirty to eighty feet, which is indicating you're, they're likely in a sand and gravel deposit. And in fact, some of the drilling logs explicitly identified that, whereas further to the north um, uh, on Audubon Lane, uh, we saw depth to bedrock of, say, ten feet, twenty feet, and it was glacial till. Um, so this is supporting the fact that we've got a significant sand and gravel deposit underlying Boyd Brook and extending southward past the site. Um, and it probably overlaps onto this eastern portion of the site based upon the soils and that runs all the way down into, um, into the Flat River Reservoir. So, in any event, the Audubon Wells also, Audubon Lane Wells, they're likely to have minimal impact because A, although it's not a huge separation, it's, it's, it is a significant separation. The further you're separated from wells, um, the less likely you are to have, have impacts. And in fact, if there were adverse well impacts, it would probably be neighboring wells in Audubon Lane impacting each other as opposed to having an impact on, uh, from, from or upon offsite wells. Other considerations are that Boyd Brook itself is between Audubon Lane and the, and the project site. And that, that has a mitigating factor as well as the sand and gravel deposits that are, uh, water-rich in that area. Looking to the south, uh, there's private wells along residences on Town Farm Road. Um, those wells, my best estimation is they are, the nearest ones are about twenty-five hundred feet to more than three thousand feet from the proposed, uh, location of the wells. That's approximately a half a mile. Uh, that creates minimum potential for interconnectivity and bedrock fractures. When you have interconnectivity, that's when, if you pump one well, it could impact another well. The further you are away, the less likely you have, you'll have interconnectivity between, uh, the wells and through bedrock fractures. The, uh, the project site is up gradient from the residences on, um, uh, in the, in, in the, the near proximity on Town Farm Road, which means drainage is going towards Town Farm Road. There'll be minimal impact as far as total water recharge moving southward, both in overburdened soils as well as in the bedrock, as it moves towards Flat River Road. And the net, the net extractions proposed on the site are a, a tiny, infinite testament fraction of the overall Boyd Brook sub watershed recharge that flows south to the reservoir. And finally, we looked at wells, uh, along Mile Road. And, um, as I said earlier, the upland area of the project site as well as some area overlapping onto the, um, lots on, that, that front, have frontage on Mile Road. That's a hydrologic divide, it's a watershed divide. And those houses will have no impact relative to drainage. There'll be no change in the drainage for those houses. Their wells will receive just as much supply and recharge as they always have because it, there's a divide between the project site and those houses. They're in the Pierce Brook sub watershed as opposed to the project site being in the Boyd Brook sub watershed. Also, the separations are about two thousand and twenty-five hundred feet, so the the likelihood of there being underlying bedrock fractures that could extend westward, while it's possible, the extent is, is fairly, um, minimized to the probability of, of such interconnectivity occurring. Uh, one thing to consider here is that uh, both, uh, the project will be subject to, the project and the wells are subject to both Rhode Island D E M and Rhode Island Department of Health regulatory requirements. And among those requirements is an extensive pumping test program. And the purpose of the pumping test program is, it's, it's, there's multiple purposes. One is to assess impacts on underlying aquifers and surrounding water resources and wetlands. Another is to assess the effective yield of the wells. And another, the third purpose is to assess the water quality of the wells. So, we're at a very early stage here. But, um, uh, on the assumption that project moves forward, uh, any wells that were put in will be under extensive regulatory review and must demonstrate um, very proactively that there'll be no adverse impact, um, as I said, on water resources or surrounding wells. Uh, that concludes my presentation and I thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Ferrari. Mister Chair, just time, um, I'd like to read at your choosing. Um, my conclusion is that between the testimony heard and the submission, the voluminous submission the proposed comprehensive permit application is consistent with the town's affordable housing ordinance. That it's consistent with the town's affordable housing plan, that the application is consistent with local needs for affordable housing in rural character, that it's consistent with the town comprehensive plan. That the application fulfills the town goal of ten percent affordable housing. And lastly, that concerns for the environment and health and safety of current residents of Coventry have been adequately addressed as evidenced by Mister Behan, Mister Peralta, Mister Ferrari's expert testimony and also, um, Mister Rabidou's report that was submitted. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, um, I have a couple. Uh, you didn't mention the distances from the abutters around the, uh, the applicant's property. Could you, could you put that map up uh, with the abutters and just kind of go over what the distances are there?
Surely.
You got that, Russ? You got the map with the abutters around the property?
Alright, um, in, yep, perfect. In, in general terms, the closest unit which is under the word Phase One on the, the, I believe it's the westerly line right there. My recollection is it is over eight hundred feet to the closest house on either Town Farm or Mile Road. Um, obviously, the units that are to the left of Phase One, you can see the property at seven forty-six Town Farm Road at the entrance. Uh, the next one, I believe, is eight hundred Town Farm Road and then eight oh two Town Farm Road. Uh, to the east of us is a vacant fifty-acre parcel. Um, and then behind us is the, is Whistle Lane and Audubon Lane. I believe we're approximately three hundred feet away from the closest house on Whistle to the nearest unit. Um, and then just, uh, Mister Behan referenced the landlocked parcel, plat thirty, uh, three-three-zero lot sixteen point one. That's owned by Mister Asselin. I don't know if he's participating in this hearing. Um, but we have a verbal agreement to purchase that from him. Um, on the assumption that the project is approved. So, um, we've been talking with him on and off for years uh, about that. And I, if that answers your question, Mister Chair, I'd like to go back one to the existing condition map and just, uh, show, show the board one thing that appears to be confusing, but it's not. Right, yeah, okay. Right to the, to the right of center, you see plat thirty lot eighty-one, which is Whistle. About fifteen years ago, somebody presented a deed to the Coventry Tax Assessor and said, I own eight acres of land. I don't know where it is. And they asked us if they could conduct a survey. The owner at the time refused. And without a survey, the then deputy tax assessor authorized that lot eighty-one be put on the map. And it was shown as an area in dispute. It was, it's part of the seventy point six eight acres. It's not an additional eight acres. But I just, I'm explaining this so the board doesn't think there's seventy-nine acres here. It's part of the thirty. But what we did was, Mr. We shown as a second parcel on the map. But it doesn't really exist. So, can I answer any other additional questions you have, sir?
Sure, I just, uh, there's, there's a, there's a somewhat of a dam in the back there that has been a contentious issue on other projects that the, the applicant has tried to build out. The condo association will take uh, control of that maintenance, of that wooden dam in the back that controls that small stream?
Uh, the, the answer to that question is maybe. Likely, the answer is yes. And the reason I said maybe is I'm not sure if the dam is on our piece of property or the fifty acre parcel to our east. We will come to a resolution and have it exactly uh, surveyed out. On the assumption it's on our land, yes, sir. Um, I believe Mr. Rabidou might be able to adj- address the dam.
Scott, are you available and can you talk about the dam?
Yeah, I can, John. I wasn't, you, you faded out.
Do you give your name and company address for the record?
Sure, um, hopefully I break in here. My name is my name is Scott Rabidou. That's R A B I D E A U. I'm a professional wetland scientist with Natural Resource Services, Inc. in Harrisville, Rhode Island. Uh, I've been practicing as a wetland biologist for thirty-two years in the state and um, I've been before the board previously. Uh, the impoundment is an earthen impoundment with a, a wooden set of gates, if you will. Um, right now, uh, it, it, it really doesn't function that well. Most of the water passes right through it. Uh, it is considered a low hazard dam uh, by the Department of Environmental Management. So there really are not any maintenance requirements applied to the property owner because it is a low hazard dam. But there, there is definitely an earthen impoundment there with an old structure to, to regulate the, the water behind it.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I believe we have correspondence from D E M that we can submit for the record, um, after the meeting that says it is, as Mr. Rabidou just stated, that it is a low hazard dam and that it specifically says no maintenance is required as it potentially poses no threat to property or life.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, I have a few more questions, but I'll open it up to the board. Does the board have any questions?
I got one.
Do you ask the applicant, who's this?
It's Scott, Mr. Reese.
Okay, Mr. Reese, go ahead.
For the, um, I got a question. With all the um, wetlands and protecting the wells and all like that, did you guys do anything about what's going to happen to our ponds around that area?
Mr. Ferrari, is that something that you can address?
Sure, um, based upon uh, the watershed hydrology in the area, uh, I, there should be no adverse impact on surrounding uh, wetlands and um, you know, and ponds and water resources in the area. The, as I said, this, effectively speaking, there's going to be no significant change in the, the drainage. And there'll be no significant change in the net water balance. So there should be really no adverse impact uh, on, on ponds, wetlands, or uh, the underlying aquifer.
And Mr. Reese, if I may add a comment, in, in Mr. Ferrari's testimony, he stated that there were two approvals that we needed to secure. Department of Health and D E M. And the purpose of the D E M approval is exactly your question. To make sure there's no adverse effect on the wetlands, upon the tributaries, et cetera.
Yeah, because I'm just worried about the ponds and the um, people living in those areas because wetlands bring the water into the ponds and you start digging up wetlands. You know, that's affects a lot.
Understood, but the testimony from Mr. Behan and uh, concurred by the report of Mr. Rabidou is we are not going into the perimeters of the wetland. Those will be flagged and they will be, um, their taboo. We don't go anywhere near those.
I got one more question. In that area, is that, um, we was gonna put sixteen homes in there. You dreamt bringing up to ninety-six homes. Now, that's not, that's not three acres per home, per home anymore. Am I correct?
That is correct, sir.
And so we're breaking what our rural residential areas uh, is about.
Well, the, the easy answer to that question is yes. Uh, one of the waivers, or multiple waivers that we have before you this evening is to um, relief from the three acre uh, zoning requirement that is there. I, right now, we're showing a density, if I'm correct, of about thirty-one thousand square feet per unit.
So you're, you're uh, you're trying to drop, you're gonna drop it down to less than an acre?
That is correct. That's the proposal, sir.
All right.
Anybody else from the board? Mr. Clooney, go ahead. You're on mute.
Sorry, I, I had a few things and I'd just like to go back to the proposed plan, please, because I know, um, you know, I know we got packets and, and I have looked at it, but the plan's kind of small. We usually get um, a little bit more of a presentation. If Tim doesn't mind, um, and if Russell could just pull up the, the proposed plan that shows the ninety-six units. I, I'd kind of like to walk through um, a few things as far as um, they're kind of logistical, like how this is going to work. Um, what, like, what are the roadway whiffs through, throughout the development? Where are the sidewalks proposed? Uh, where are the trash receptacles? Um, how, how do you plan on dealing with snowplow? Um, think, things of that nature. If there was just some way to walk through. I mean, this is a very small plan to follow.
Yeah, um, the, the Boulevard section up near the entrance with Town Farm Road.
Yeah.
There's two separate distinct roads with an island in the middle. Each road would be twenty feet wide of travel lane and then one foot Cape Cod berm on each side. So the total pavement width of each one of those roads is twenty-two feet. So there's two at twenty-two at the Boulevard. And then the single roadways, the two loop roadways, those would be twenty-four foot wide travel lanes with one foot Cape Cod berm on each side for a total width of pavement of twenty-six feet.
Any sidewalks in there at all for the residents?
Yes, there, if you zoom in close, you'd see a sidewalk on one side of the road around the entire development. If you keep zooming in, you'll, do you see it off on one side of the road?
Yeah, I, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, okay, and how about uh, trash receptacles? Uh, what, what do you envision for trash pickup? And they're gonna come in, they're gonna have?
We're envisioning just individual um, canisters for this development.
And a private waste taller?
Yeah, private waste taller. And, and private snow plowing.
And is the leach field that's shown within Phase Two, is that for all three phases?
Yes, that would be for all three phases.
And where is that in the, in the approval process? You've done enough water, uh, enough examination of the soils and so forth to determine that reasonably, um, likely that's going to be approved.
Yes, we, we've had D E M at the site to, to verify the soil evaluations for septic designs. Uh, originally, we had those sixteen lots as well, and we did two holes on each one of those sixteen lots. We, we must have a total of and we have pages and pages of soil evaluations out there. And um, the permit process for the septic system starts after this master plan.
Correct.
You know, we do have a lot of the soils information in hand, but the actual submittal to D E M will, will commence after master plan approval.
So, right, but you, you're pretty confident that with the soils that are out there, the size of what you've proposed for the leach area, that that's going to handle the uh, waste water?
That is a legitimate size. You know, based on the soil value. Sorry, is that me?
No, it's Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, okay.
Guys, it's off.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the answer.
Yeah, that, that is size based on the soil evaluations we have in hand. That has been verified by D E M.
Okay, and, okay, and you answered the question about who owned the other lot. And then the, the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, maybe you want to wait and go through it after. I mean, we've got a lengthy list of, of waivers that I know are contained in our packet, but we haven't really discussed each one or heard from the applicant as far as what the reasoning is in asking for those waivers. And there was quite lengthy, so um, I'll defer to you to how you want to handle that.
Sure, uh, what I was, well, number one, usually there's a breakdown on, on what each waiver uh, cost the town. I know on a lot of these comp permits, uh, there's a breakdown. So basically, when I was reading the packet, I took out my calculator, but there was no numbers to be seen, so uh, Mr. Paglari, I'd like to see those uh, broken down on the fees that you're requesting and what it's costing the town to um, to waive those fees. Because I don't see any numbers. Does anybody else see any numbers? I didn't see any.
In, in fact, um, that was another thing. I, I know through the calculations, they've estimated the assessed value of the real estate. I know some of the assessments in town are less than market value. I don't know what the market uh, value is estimated at this time, at least for these dwellings. And then what is the affordable um, number that they'll be allowed to charge for those units? Um, I, I'd just like to get that out there. And the waivers I was referring to, I appreciate that there were no numbers associated, but I'm talking about some of the other waivers. Um, dimensional, uh, zoning, uh, things of that nature. They're touched on, but I just, I guess I just want to know, um, without tearing this package apart and taking, taking one, for example, it's difficult me, for me to, um, I gotta find it again.
I'm prepared to walk through each of the waivers.
And, and the other thing is
Actual numbers, but
Mr. Mr. Paglari, the other thing is, I don't know if you're aware of it, but your, your microphone, it just keeps like when you're talking and we, some, some of it comes out, we only catch like the last half of the sentence. So it's made it very difficult for, for me, at least in some cases.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
And Rick, to expand upon that too, I think, um, there's a lot of fees that we can't waive uh, that those would be done by the town council. And usually those are broken down uh, to, to state which ones are town council waivers and which ones are planning board waivers. Some waivers we don't have control of, that would be from the town council. Um, so I, I'm thinking I want to uh, take on those waivers after we get through public hearing. Um, and for the public, I always keep public hearing open, so don't worry, you'll always have the opportunity to speak. Um, does anybody else on the board have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
Um, well, this is probably going to be for Tim and for uh, Scott Rabidou. Tim, first question, you're showing a community mailbox right at the entrance of the site. The, is that going to present a problem for traffic? And I guess Herman could weigh in on this as well, for traffic as far as uh, jamming up the site with people trying to get in, with people trying to collect their mail. I'm not sure how big that area is. I'm just looking at it from a safety standpoint.
Well, I mean, with wise and everything, I mean, this, this drawing scale is very, very tiny. As you can see, you could barely see the sidewalks on here because the project, the project size is so large, it's seventy-one acres in size. So tho- those are normal travel islands and um, you know, for the mail facility, several cars can stack in that area. And, and during, during the next phase is the real design phase. This is a conceptual master plan. We, we will definitely sit down with the traffic engineer and, and refine that design as necessary.
Okay, that, that was my safety concern for that. And my next question is, um, you addressed um, snow push. What type of, do we see any issues with snow push, with sand salt or sands affecting any of the wetlands or fouling up the, the stormwater systems in this area? Uh, because it is so rural out here. And I'm not sure who wants to take that answer.
Uh, is it Tim or Mr. Rabidou?
Yeah, um, for snow plowing.
Sorry, I just need to know who's speaking. Maybe if we took the map down or?
Oh, first, it was, uh, I was speaking first, Lori, James Kenny.
I know Mr. Kenny's voice, but the next gentleman, I'm not sure.
Hi, this is uh, Tim Behan.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, for uh, snow plowing and where it's stored and, and associate, associated uh, uh, salts, um, and potential for pollution contamination. Um, our whole development is outside of the perimeter wetlands. And one of the concerns D E M had, would have would be if, if any of those storage areas would be inside one of those perimeter wetlands, those resource areas. So any storage of snow would be outside of those storage areas. And they also don't like them in certain stormwater best management practices. So during the, the next step, the preliminary plan stage, we'll definitely have uh, those areas identified um, where good storage areas can, can happen.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for right now, Chairman Flynn.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I want to add that, um, on Mr. Kenny's
Mr. Reese.
Yeah, on the, on the plowing, now, um, normally it's on Coventry, I think it's three sand, two salt. I don't know how you guys set it up, but you should have less sea, uh, salt in that area because that would contaminate the water system in that area.
That's fair.
Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Lukowitz.
Who is going to plow that whole complex? Is it going to be Mr. Miosi's responsibility?
It will be the responsibility of the association to hire a private contractor. It will not be the town.
Okay, and how wide is the entrance to this complex?
Well, as Mr. Behan testified, there's two twenty-foot roads with one foot Cape Cod berms on each side, so each roadway is twenty-two feet in and out.
Okay, um, and the houses, you know, they're only going to be like twelve feet in between them?
That is the proposal.
Doesn't seem like a lot. Sounds like it's, they're going to be on top of one another. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Noted.
If I can expand upon Ms. Ms. Lukowitz, I, I kind of feel the same on this. I feel um, you know, ninety-six units are a lot of units for uh, an R R three, even with the comp permit plan. Um, me personally, I don't see any garages. I'd like to see garages because you're going to have all those cars, you're going to look down that road and you, you're going to see nothing but cars. I think people like to put uh, their garages, especially with New England weather, they like to house their cars in the garage. Um, I think I'd like to see at least a third of these cut, cut down. Um, that's my that's my opinion for now. I if anybody else on the board like to talk before I open up public hearing, because we can always talk after public hearing is closed. But I just wanted to touch on some of these main issues, so we don't get a lot of redundancy from the public. But the public will always have the opportunity to talk. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Carl.
Go ahead, Carl.
Um I get one of one of the questions I'll have is got to do with the traffic study. Now, we've got ninety-six houses on there. Are we looking at one car per household, two cars per household? Or what was the determining factor is the amount of vehicles uh in that whole facility?
Herman, can you answer that, please? Yes, uh basically, the we calculated the uh we estimated the trips based on the IT trip generation, which is based on um actual data uh from all over the country. Um so it's not typically one car for one unit. It's actually just uh a factor of what we use uh in order to uh generate um estimated trips for um, you know, ninety-six units, giving fifty units, a hundred units. So um so from our study, we looked at, I believe, looking at ninety-six unit, uh ninety-six trips in the afternoon and about seventy-two in the morning. But that doesn't mean that it's ninety-six vehicles. Ninety-six troops trips mean, you know, it could be one one trip um from the house to a destination, and then another trip could be from a destination to the house. So it doesn't necessarily mean ninety-six vehicles. If that answers your question.
Sort of. Um and and that um packet that you have, there is a, the last page says drinking water packages. Is that any erroneously? Because I don't see how that has to do with the trips of cars.
Drinking? Drinking packages?
Drinking water packages. Carl, what that was, that was probably if you downloaded it from the website, that were or that could have been part of um Mr. Ferrari's report, because they were back to back to each other. Okay, so it's probably in the erroneous. Ferrari testified on the uh drinking water. So it was probably one of Mr. Ferrari's sheets. Okay, it's just in it's in the wrong binder.
That's noted.
Okay, I'm I'm also.
I got another question. Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Um, Mr. Um, you said ninety-six units, you said ninety-six cars. If there's a mother and father, there's two cars, that's that's a hundred and ninety-two cars. You double up on each unit. If there's a wife and a husband, or if it's a single parent with older kids, you're looking at two cars easily for one one unit.
Yes, you're 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 confusing trips versus the number of vehicles that's going to be inside the the neighborhood.
That's what I'm saying. If you if if one, if a family goes into one unit, a mother and father both drive, they both have their own car. If there's ninety-six units, you time that by two.
Yep.
Am I correct? That's a hundred, that's a hundred and ninety-two cars in there.
Correct, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're all coming out at the same peak hour.
No, but I'm saying that the question was how many cars are going to be in there?
Also.
You can you can have three cars per unit if they have an older child.
Correct, yes, there, yes, I agree. There will be probably a hundred, not, it could be double that, but again.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Rick. I see you on here.
Just one more thing, because we did get a lot of written correspondence in advance, and I just wanted for the record state, as Mr. Flynn did. Um you know, it's a stretch to go from nineteen units that would normally be allowed in the RR three zone to ninety-six. And I don't know what the correct number is, but I think the density is a concern, at least of the the neighbors and um given the space concerns between the unit that that might be something. Um we we would appreciate if the applicant would reconsider. At 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 the appropriate time, not not right now.
Mr. Kenny, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question. I I don't know if um this would be for John or not. Since the project is going to have be an affordable housing type project. Um and this is a homeowners' association. Has any consideration been given to the the folks that move into affordable housing? Being able to keep up with home association type fees for um follow-on projects like road repair, basin repair? Yeah, I I don't want to try and set, see us set folks up for failure of getting an affordable house, then not then not being able to keep up with the associated fees and stuff.
All right, terrific question. Um as part of the application to Rhode Island Housing to receive a letter of eligibility, we have to propose a monthly association fee. And we have to, we have to break that out. How much? We're going to be charging different fees is the answer to your question. Um the uh affordable units will be probably two-thirds of the market rate unit association fees. The expectation is that the fees will be extraordinarily reasonable because it's not as though there is a um tennis courts to maintain, swimming pools, none of those, because it's a rural design. Um they're more apt to utilize the grassed areas above the leach field for recreation or go out in the woods than they uh so the costs are going to be substantially lower than most other associations in town. Um we think they're going to be under two hundred for a market rate and under a hundred for an affordable unit. Um one of the biggest the ways of backing into that number is we have to hi- we have to hire a Rhode Island Housing requires us that we have a monitor, a person who um interviews each of the affordable persons' applications. And we have to pay them to go through the twenty-four affordable units that we'll have to make sure that the persons can afford it. And what you do is the the maximum sales price is based on their income in a formula times their projected expenses for property taxes, monthly fee. And then you know how much they can afford to pay for the unit based on, I believe the standard is thirty percent of their income. So it's a math formula, but to answer your question, yes, they pay less than a market rate person.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
The chairman, I just, I just want to follow up on on that with a with a couple of things. Um first of all, before we get into my question, before I ask the actual question, I am aware of uh residential developments, not condominium developments, where load a mod homes that are in there just don't even bother paying the homeowners' association fee because they're not moving, they're not going to sell their house. They they've even, the treasurers have gotten attorneys, they've they've sent them collection letters, and they just don't have an incentive to pay. Um because they'd rather do something else with the money. Um so that, so I think Mr. Kenny's uh uh question was valid, but I guess that that the follow-up to that is what are the common elements that the fees are gonna gonna be related to? I realize this is a condominium with freestanding homes, so is the homeowner responsible for the exterior of the dwelling, the windows, the roofs, um for future, all future maintenance? Um some some developments, they're like that because they want to make sure that the integrity and and the facades of the buildings are adequately maintained. So if those are not included in the in the fee, that's a concern. But uh let's assume that the homeowners are responsible for their own dwellings. Uh it'd be road maintenance, drainage maintenance, snow plowing, uh open space insurance and the I I assume the septic system, the well system and the cisterns, right? That's what would be included.
That's correct.
So are you, well, I guess the the follow-up is any part of the dwelling covered by the homeowners, by the condominium association?
I believe that the draft or um condominium declaration that we submitted to you.
Yeah.
That was a while ago. It's my understanding that the exterior will be association maintenance.
Okay, so we've got the exteriors and the roofs and all of that, and and you think that'll be less than two hundred dollars just because they don't have swimming pools and tennis courts?
It 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 there's there's many components to that equation. Right now, that was the proposal to Rhode Island Housing.
Yeah.
But I'm hearing tonight that the board wants us to go back and possibly redesign the project from a unit component, a total number of units. And if we were to do that, we got to reinvent everything. So we'll take a look at that.
Are we talk, are you we talking about the number of units?
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
Right, okay, all right. Well, what I was getting at is I'm also familiar with a a four hundred and fifty uh freestanding condominium, you know, Weathersfield in in Warwick, and and the fee are over three hundred for that one. They do have tennis courts and they do have a pool, but um uh but to re, i- i- it's the it's the long-term capital improvement budget that usually eats up most of the money, as well as insurance, landscape and snowplow removal, at least based on my uh property management experience. And unfortunately, um quite often, through no fault of anyone, um those budgets are usually uh inadequate when they're first established. And it's not until you get into years five and six and you start seeing how fast things are starting to deteriorate and putting together a plan that you realize you have to increase the fees. And then, of course, by then, the folks have to vote to increase the fees and they don't want to, and sometimes you end up underfunded. But but again, back to Mr. Kenny's um point, it it would be nice if there was a mechanism so that those fees had to be paid and could be could be governed so that they were guaranteed to be collected um from all of the units. So that folks just couldn't ignore payment for such a a long period of time and then, you know, you have problems.
Your concerns are noted. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else on the board?
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson.
Go ahead, Glenn.
John, thanks for your presentation. Uh your experts were uh they were quick. They talked about, you know, the meat and potatoes of the individual aspects. So you know, the the big pill to swallow is ninety-six homes. You take the mile radius, I think you're we're doubling, we're doubling the uh the homes within a mile radius with one development. So it's going to be a lot of concerns. I just got a question for uh Mr. Ferrari on the uh on the water summary. And I'm just curious, the um how, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't find it. I don't know how how deep, how deep are those public wells going to be? I'm sorry if I missed you said it and I can't find it. How deep we going with those public wells, like in the north, I think it was the northeast corner by Audubon Lane?
Well, we haven't selected a well depth. I did an analysis of water storage in the bedrock to a depth of five hundred feet. What I will tell you is that uh we often, uh it's not unusual to drill wells, particularly public wells, when you get public bedrock wells, we're going to depths of four hundred, five hundred, six hundred feet, as opposed to depths of, say, two hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet for a lot of residential wells. Okay, we're surfing a single-family house. So.
Right. So when you studied the uh the forty homes on Audubon, did did you, did you know how deep those were? Are those a hundred fifty, two hundred?
Uh there actually is a table in the report, and if I recall correctly, there were a few wells that were maybe a hundred and a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty feet deep. And they had a few wells that were uh between four hundred and six hundred feet deep also. And then, of course, a lot of them are two hundred and fifty, three hundred, whatever. So there there's a range. They're drilling to water.
Right.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
Right, so the 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 public water, uh the public uh wells you're putting in are going to be, you know, pretty much in the same linear depth really as pretty much the existing homes. And it's just, uh, you know, I I have well watering. You know, this is a tough year, so I was talking to someone today, and it's just any report, any report put out with the intentions and the uh and the facts, I'll say, it's just contradicts like the reality of most people. We go whack this year, man. People are running out of water left and right, and uh it's going to be just, uh it's going to be a tough sell. Um you know, you we just got to be prepared to answer all these questions. Uh people are fracking left and right and uh this year in many areas. I'm not sure about the Audubon Lane area or where you where you where you're going to build, but it seemed like it hit everybody to include just everyone having to go deeper, you know? Uh I had to go deeper. Um I went from two hundred feet, had to go to four hundred feet, uh just because we just run out of water. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And uh my questions are answered. Thank you.
Anybody else before I open up public hearing and then after public hearing, we we certainly can ask more questions.
Just one more question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Lukwitz.
How much of the woods are going to be removed? How many trees, bushes?
Well, on the site plan, we we show a proposed limit of disturbance. I I don't know how many trees that would be. Um but we could calculate the the area, how many square feet of trees would be removed and report back to you.
That's going to be a big question for people that are going to call in. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Well, right, right, right now now I can state that due to the airstrip over half well has been cleared. I think there's close.
You're breaking up, John.
There's that have already been cleared and most I said right now, the airstrip um cleared about twenty acres of land. And Mr. Beehan's design maximizes that area to minimize the disturbance of the wooded areas.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before I open up public hearing? Before I open up public hearing, does anybody want to take a break before I open up public hearing? Is everybody all set? Okay. Uh I'll take a motion to open up public hearing.
Motion open up public hearing by Carl.
Okay, Carl.
Sorry, I second.
Second by Ms. Lukwitz. Okay, uh Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Ray's.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny. Mr. Kenny. Mr. Ms. Lukwitz.
Aye.
Mr. Colonial.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, we're going to open up public hearing. Um Mr. Crossman.
Yes, sir.
Are you ready to open up public hearing? I know um.
Well, I think yes, but I um should, do we see if Mr. Delaney wants to go first to see, how does he want to do it? Does he want to let the public speak? Or is he prepared to ask questions at this time?
I don't have a problem in letting the public speak at all. First.
Okay.
So, Mr. Delaney, you representing the the public in this project?
I'm representing two of the butters, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay.
And I have one expert.
Um, when do you want to present that expert?
I defer really to the chairman. It's going to be relative to um property valuation um if the application would be approved. So I I would go to the discretion of the chairman and the and the members of the board.
Well, since he is here tonight, I'm assuming you'd like to present him this evening.
I would like to, yes. I mean, but it's only, it's only eight forty-one.
Um
if I'm taking you, if I'm taking your suggestion, why don't I, why don't I do that now?
I I think that would be a smart uh move if if you bring your experts in, because if if the public speaks for quite a while, um I'd like to get to your experts, so they don't have to come back if we don't finish this project tonight.
Then then I um I I would request, if Mr. Coyle is online uh on the Zoom, um I would uh like to present him to the board um relative to the report that I had sent to Mr. Crossman um this afternoon um concerning his work.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're in public caring. I know Mr. Delaney is on. I think um it would be important for Mr. Delaney to state his name and address for the record and also who he is representing.
Yes, my name is William Delaney. I'm an attorney admitted in Rhode Island. I practice with a law firm of Blaze Cunningham, Crowe and Chester, one fifty Main Street in Pawtucket. I represent um Mr. Shane McGrath and his family as well as Mr. Cherry Bissard and his family.
And Mr. Flynn, I'd just like to say for the record, uh Mr. Delaney deferred, he made the statement that he emailed something to my office this afternoon. I was not in receipt of any email from Mr. Delaney this afternoon. I just went and double-checked again. Um because I would have forwarded that to the commission members if I had.
I I apologize. I I sent it this afternoon and.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I, I sent it this afternoon and I didn't get a rejection or a, or a non-delivery. I apologize that I'll get, I'll do that again tonight when I, um, uh, when, after my presentation, but um I'll get it over to um, to Mr. Crossman again tomorrow. I apologize for that.
No problem, Mr. Delaney. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you, uh, you, you're gonna introduce, uh, Mr. Coyle, you said?
Yes, sir. Uh, William Coyle. I don't know if he's online.
I am.
Oh, fine. Um, Mr. Coyle, could you state your name, address and your, um, your job, please?
My name is William E. Coyle, the third. I'm a real estate appraiser and consultant. Have been a real estate appraiser and consultant for about forty-five years.
And were you engaged by me to prepare a report for this evening's hearing?
Yes, I have prepared that report. But apparently the board has not received it. So I don't know if it would be uh better to read the entire report and bore the board with that or just summarize what hopefully they'll read when they get the full report later.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a, um, uh, do you have a suggestion or a recommendation or a preference?
I don't have a problem with him summarizing it as long as he picks out the, you know, the important details of that report.
Thank you. Mr. Coyle?
Well, basically.
Could you tell the board, first, before you read, read your summary or, or summarize your points, could you explain to the board um, your, the scope of your engagement and what you did in preparing this report?
Basically, I uh inspected the subject locus. I went to the site. I have been to the site for previous occasions anyway, but I revisited the site. I met with some of the neighbors who were above the subject property. I have met with you. I have reviewed the comprehensive plan. I have reviewed the zoning ordinances. I have reviewed the planning uh procedures um in order to familiarize or refresh myself with those issues. I've also checked on various sales information that has occurred within the community. Uh, I viewed the roadways. I viewed, I'm familiar with the neighborhood as a result of my normal practice. Um, and basically, uh, been through the entire uh review of the materials that were presented to the board, including the uh hydrological information that we received, I believe, yesterday.
Um, and, and you met with my clients, um, uh, uh, Mr. McGrath and Mr. Bissard at my office on um Monday of this week?
Yes, I did.
And you had the opportunity to make inquiries of them relative to their ownership interest in the property?
I was able to speak with them about everything that they were aware of within the immediate area. I also reviewed a report that was done by one of the abutters that was fairly comprehensive of uh the fact a magnificent job summarizing all of the issues within this uh project. He, he did a marvelous job.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I do, I believe that, um, uh, I don't have to qualify Mr. Coyle as an expert. So I'm just gonna ask him to um present to the board uh the summary of his report.
Yeah, that would be great.
Fine, thank you. Mr. Coyle, could you prepare um a brief summary to the board for um their consideration?
Yes, I did.
And what is it?
The basically, the um, in summary, my report identifies who and what I am. And then it identifies some of the natural uh identifications of the subject property and the subject locus. And then basically gets involved with the basic concerns. Did I lose me?
Nope. No, you're there. You're there, Mr. Coyle.
Okay, I, I must have hit something because everything on my screen went blank. But, um, but anyway, if you can hear me, I can see you in another, uh, what I have. Um, my major concern of this issue is the valuation of the subject versus the valuation of the surrounding areas. Um, in addition to several other things that I will bump into, but the most important issue in my mind is the overall valuation. Driven mostly by the fact that the subject property, as we all know, was in an RR three zone. And in such, the property itself is um proposed to be totally different than what otherwise would be expected within an RR three zone. My most common concern is the fact that the abutters, as well as all of the other neighbors that are in here, anticipate that the rules and regulations given them by the town would anticipate that certain things were going to occur as a result of the type of zone that they purchased. They paid additional monies in many cases to be in a more rural zone, bigger lots, um, different types of things. And because of their desire to be in a place that had more rural aspect, that's why they moved to this particular neighborhood. If they wanted to be a downtown area, it could be in Providence. If they wanted to be more dense within the town itself, they could move to some of the more densely populated areas. But they chose because the protections that the zoning ordinances and the comprehensive plan gave them to move here and to enjoy that particular lifestyle. That in of itself is where the problem exists. As we've all heard previously, originally, we were talking about sixteen to nineteen homes. It could have been built on this particular thing, keeping in line with the zone. Whether they are affordable, non-affordable, it total number is where we are talking about. Increasing that to ninety-six and all, close to five hundred percent increase over what somebody might be expecting is a certain difference. Some point out during this meeting that we have seen the fact that this number is going to be greater than everything that's within the area. And that's true. Basically, the problem is going to be that the valuation as a result of this particular project, especially a project of this size, is going to cause a diminution in value for the subject uh surrounding properties to the, of the subject site. And so therefore, the um valuation of the subject neighborhood is going to, in my opinion, be decreased and cause a irreparable harm to the abutters and to the immediate areas. Um, that's before we start talking about the other factors that are going to affect value, meaning the type and quality of street frontages that exist within the subject neighborhood and the access in and out of this particular site. One of my clients is with uh immediately and their driveways are almost going to immediately abut. And we already have seen uh heavy traffic flows at certain times, different types of traffic that fly through this area and bringing in up to a hundred additional vehicles to immediate location. Not spreading them around town with taking all those vehicles and putting them at the end of this particular driveway and having them all come out is going to definitely be over concern to anybody who was buying a property in the area. It's gonna say, do I want to live next door to that because of the problems I'm going to face? Where I thought I was in a ru- rural residential zone, suddenly I'm in a high density zone. And all of those things are of concern. And that's without even getting into the water supply issues that were already mentioned here this evening. And uh, I was somewhat amused to hear the fact that we're going to put back as much water as we're gonna use. That's a different problem altogether. Um, but again, in close summary, my opinion is that's a result of the total amount of units that are going to be proposed to this area. There is no question in my mind that the impact on value, the health and safety of the community, et cetera, will be impacted and the property values will be decreased as a result of this number of units.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Coyle, relative to one of my clients, uh, Mr. McGrath, who lives at seven forty-six, seven forty-eight Town Road. He, he is the owner of the property that basically abuts the entry, uh, the two-lane road that is proposed in the development, correct?
Correct, right next to the postal center.
Right. And, and towards that end, if this, speaking as an, in your expert capacity, um, what he, he would have a direct, it, um, would be directly impacted from a valuation perspective on his property if the application was approved as submitted, correct?
He would be more uh negatively impacted. The closer you are, the more, more impact you would have. Absolutely.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I really don't have any other inquiry. I, again, I apologize for Mr. Coyle's report not being delivered to you. But if any members of the board have any questions to Mr. Coyle, I certainly have no uh problem with regards to him responding to them at this time.
Anybody on the board have any questions? I see Mr. Pagliarini. Would you like to address that, please?
I would, sir. Um, Mr. Coyle, Bill, I've known you forever. I'm not questioning your, your credentials. You, you were brought in as an expert in valuation, correct?
Uh, real estate, real estate value in general, yes.
Okay. What is the current use of the property?
Currently, it's vacant. It has minimal use as a runway setup. Uh, but that's not it.
In, in, in your, your opinion, there's a greater diminution of value to a residential development than to a private airstrip, immediately abutting your client's property?
Well, I am a pilot. Um, but you asked me to speak as real estate. As from my experience as a pilot, I can tell you that in my thirty-five years, forty years as a pilot, I've never flown to this uh particular airport. My market has an airport, it has limited use as an airport. It's a private airport.
It's a private airstrip.
And um with the amount of traffic, everybody who bought in here has bought in pretty much knowing that that very limited access has been there. And they may have paid less as a result of it, but that impact has already been tested through the line.
The, the airst, the private airstrip has been out about five years now. When all the persons bought in, it was an active gravel operation there. Do you think that had any diminution of value?
I believe it was an active airstrip before they attempted to put in the gun range.
That's correct.
More than five years ago.
It used, it, going back to the nineteen sixties to approximately five to ten years ago, it was a gravel operation there.
The gravel was removed, right. It was a barrel pit, actually, but yes.
Okay. And are you familiar with the abutting parcel to this project, the fifty-acre parcel?
I am familiar with it, yes.
And what is, what is the use of that property?
Well, it's not, it's not ninety-six units is where I'm being asked to portray.
Next door to the subject property, the ninety-six unit project
Yes.
is a fifty-acre parcel of land that is an active gravel pit with stone crusher. Does that have any effect on your report?
Again, all of those kinds of things have been measured. And the valuation of the properties have been measured in accordance with the things that were already existing. As we speak now, the proposal to have ninety-six units go in here, even though it hasn't been tested or proven or ground broken, anyone buying would have to stop and look to say, would I want to pay this much for a property nearby? Because there is a proposal to put in that much property in one lot.
Do you know the assessed valuation of uh seven forty-six Town Farm Road?
I don't.
It's two hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars. That is gonna be, that currently is less than the projected market rate of the units that are to be built. So theoretically, I could bring my own real estate expert in to say that the existing homes might diminish my value. But and argue that we're actually raising the value of real estate in the neighborhood. I looked at seven forty-six Town Farm Road, assessed value seven, two seventy-two six, seven oh eight Town Farm Road, which is right next to it, two seventy-six, four hundred. Six hundred Town Farm Road, the next property, two ninety-six, one. Eight oh two Town Farm Road, two ninety-one, two. These are properties that are next to a gravel bank and next to a private airstrip. They did not come for the rural aspect that you're espousing. They live next to de facto um locally unwanted land uses. You can make the argument, but you don't have any sales to substantiate that this project will cause a diminution of value, do you?
Yes, I do.
And, and where are you getting those sales from?
I have for a long period of time identified the fact that if you were to take a use of a property, if the board or the, the town, and through their ordinances, wanted to change the type and quality of use that is located in the immediate area, then that would be a totally different event. What we're proposing here is these people own and bought into an RR three zone. And by the actions of a single property owner, we are going to be changing the density within the area from an RR three closer to a low, to a high density zone just by the action of this single event. And so we're going to de facto change the zone within the area because of the fact of this project.
And you're familiar with the comprehensive permit statutes?
I am.
Okay. And do you know where the RR three zoning district begins on Town Farm Road?
It, uh, just after Boyd Brook is where it shifts to R two.
This is the very first parcel on RR three.
Correct.
Can you give me the address of your other client, Mr. Bissard?
Yes, I can. Just wait a minute, John.
Sure.
One fifty-six Mile Road.
One fifty-six Mile. And, Mr. Coyle, it's your testimony that this project's gonna have a negative effect on a property on Mile Road?
Yes. I, it's my opinion, uh.
How, how far away, how far away is this project gonna affect value in your opinion?
It's going to affect the RR three zone itself.
It is the entire district, all the way to the western Potteau County, where it becomes five acres is gonna.
Obviously, the closer you are to it, the more impact is observed. But the point is, more importantly, Mile Road, absolutely, because they are abutting to the rear of it. But what I'm suggesting is that the property itself, ninety-six units within an area that is proposed to only have sixteen to nineteen units is a massive leap. Where nobody would have expected that we were going to put in, if, if I were buying a property and I looked at that lot and the zoning said to me, I could only build sixteen to nineteen units, no one would ever propose that I'm going to get ninety-six units of that. So if I were going to get forty cars, nobody would suggest that I was going to get two hundred. Nobody thinking properly would think in that fashion. This single event is going to shift the overall potential.
And do you, do you believe, what negative impact is this proposed development gonna have on one fifty-six Mile Road?
The same thing. They bought, were residential, they bought into an RR three zone and they're suddenly, as a result of this single owner's action, going to be into a high density zone instead of a low.
And how deep are the parcels on Mile Road?
Well, they're fairly deep, but that's what would be expected. And that's what they paid for, for a abutting and uh to get some.
A abutting, a abutting, a gravel, a abutting, a abutting, a gravel bank and or a private airstrip.
That's all part of the event.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Mr. Colonial, I'll get you next, Mr. Ray.
I, I asked, I asked a question early, Mr. Pagliarini.
I, I asked, I asked a question early, Mr. Paglirini, and I don't know if you know what the anticipated asking price is gonna be on the market value units in there and noting that the, the below market units will look identical. And then this goes also to Mr. Delaney. I'm curious to see what, uh, Mr. Uh, Coyle has estimated the current market value to be. I know Mr. Paglirini focused on the assessed value. I know my home, the assessed value is much lower than the market value, and I think that's the case throughout the town. So in order for us to make an informed decision on, on both sides of that argument, I would like to know uh, what the values are on some of these abutting properties in relation to uh, what, uh, the applicant anticipates the asking price is going to be on the market value units. And I think that will lend itself to us on making an informed decision as to the, to the impacts on the surrounding properties. Albeit, I do agree, um, to some extent that the immediate abutter that now has the driveway or entrance next to their property is going to at least suffer, if nothing else, um, we'll call it an inconvenience related to the, to the quality of life. I can't say or speak to, uh, especially in this real estate market, how it would actually affect uh, dollars out of his pocket if he, if he was to sell his house. But, um, but that said, I just think that would be helpful information because we don't know if these units are gonna sell for two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, and we don't know if the surrounding properties are worth two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand. But I believe that the values are somewhat similar. Um, when, you know, other than the, the quality of life or the unanticipated consequence of, of the project in and of itself, if it's gonna have a, a quantifiable impact on the values.
Mr. Coloney.
I would be more than happy to be, uh, to ask Mr. Coyle to do that work, sir.
Just a few estimates, and again, if Mr. Paglirini.
We can find out how much the value of most units proposed are going to be.
Yeah.
Right, right now, Mr. Chairman, the market rate as designed, I proposed it two sixty-nine nine. Now. What I'm hearing from the board is that they want fewer units and garages.
That was, that was my, that was my suggestion.
If we.
All right. The garages, the garages were my suggestion.
If, if I was to do that and come back to the board with a different design that had fewer units with garages, then my footprint's gonna be bigger. My values are gonna be closer to three hundred thousand dollars. Again. I haven't seen Mr. Coyle's report, but I've got four of the six abutting properties at less than assessed value, less than my market value.
Well, John, with all due respect, I think, uh, that the gentleman who asked, um, for valuation, aside from assessed valuation, we could get that information and share it obviously with you as well as the members of the board.
That's fair.
We also would be interested in the square footages because while the total dollars that are being opined here may be different, the price per square foot, these units, these units are considerably smaller than any house that is in the area.
Well, that, that depends if it's the wish of the board for me to redesign the project before our next hearing because I may have to go with larger units to offset some of the other, um, development costs. So my unit size may need to go higher if I'm adding garages and fewer units, if that's what the board directs me to do at the end of the evening.
There also seems to be very limited parking here, or guests.
Well, I, I believe the testimony was that we exceed the regulations of the zoning ordinance.
Right, but regulations typically are like one to one and a half or two per house, and these are not the standard type of house.
If, if I could just make the suggestion, though, that, that we prepare valuations relative to the butters, to the, um, proposed development. Um, I think that'll advance the ball for purposes of discussion.
Well, Mr. Mr. Chair, there's, there's two persons right now that can talk to valuation. That's Mr. Coyle, who is a well-renowned, a renowned and credentialed appraiser and assessor, and myself, who is a Rhode Island certified tax assessor. I would ask that Mr. Coyle prove through sales of other Coventry uh, comprehensive permits that abutting properties saw a diminution of value. That should be readily available to him to find other comprehensive permits in the town and find out if there was any negative effect at all on the property. Otherwise, it's just specious in an opinion.
Well, with, with due, with due respect to my brother, I, I, I think that if Mr. Coyle performs that analysis, we can at least have some more discussion points. And again, subject to the chair's.
That sounds fair.
Then we'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Delaney, do you have anything else? Um, wanna speak about tonight?
No, I, I, I really, I really don't. I just wanted to make Mr. Coyle's presentation, and again, I profusely apologize for, about the report. We'll, um, do our work, um, that we just agreed to do, get it to you in as timely a manner as we can. And, um, I thank you for your time.
Uh, we, we thank you also. Mr. Crossman, would you like to continue with, uh, calling the public?
Yeah, not a problem, okay. Uh, this time I have five people raise their hands. Uh, this time I'll bring in, uh, Jonathan McNamara. Jonathan, could you please unmute yourself? There you go, sir.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear my, do you need me to state my address?
Yeah, your name and address, please.
Jonathan McNamara, fifteen Audubon Lane.
Thank you.
Um, I have two questions, one regarding the, uh, the cisterns inside the plat itself. Um, on the, on the drawings, it said, um, ten thousand gallons with, uh, an automatic supply. Um, I just wanted to know what you, what that means. Um, would it be automatically refilled if it needed to be used by the well? Or if it was refilled through some other means?
I believe there's three of those cisterns, right?
I, I can.
Are you talking about the cisterns or the wells?
The cistern, I, it said that they had an automatic, um, refill supply, but I wasn't sure what that source was. If it was just from rainfall, groundwater, or if it was through like the well itself.
You want to answer that, Mr. Paglirini?
I would ask Mr. Beahan to see if he could answer that.
Okay.
The note probably says like an automatic refill, so, uh, that would, you know, there'd be a float inside the tank, and if the level ever got low, it'd just fill it up to the top of the tank again.
From what source, Tim?
It'd be from the, typically the drinking water supply.
Okay, okay. Um, and my second question is, in the event, it doesn't, hopefully doesn't happen, what is the contingency plan to, uh, if the well pump um, was to become unusable? Is there a, uh, a secondary water supply tank maybe on the ground to help offset the, the problems where people won't have a, a water shut off while this thing is being fixed, if it ever happens?
Mr. Chair, if I may, it's my understanding that we're gonna have two community wells.
Who's speaking, Mr. Paglirini?
Uh, I believe we have two community wells for redundancy purposes, and it's my understanding that each well will have a generator.
Okay, so what about if mechanically the, the, the pump fails, not necessarily electrically, but mechanically, that's gonna, you're gonna shut off water to ninety-six potential units?
I'd ask Mr. Ferrari if he could answer that.
This is Bob Ferrari. Um, to respond to Mr. McNamara's question, the, the point of having two, uh, public water supply wells is that if there is a failure of one of the wells for any reason whatsoever, you have a redundant, uh, supply. So specifically for the point of minimizing the risk of a loss of, of water service.
And each individual well can, um, can manage the additional supply from the other units that were on the, the broken well without having too much of an issue?
Yeah, the, the short answer is correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara, if you have questions.
Okay, at this time, I am going to bring in, um, Ms. Linda Lully.
Uh, it's Linda Lully. Um, my husband and I live at four ninety Madison Road, which is on the corner of Madison and Mile Road. Um, we own about twenty-five acres of land, and I'm here to just can, share my concerns about what we've anticipated. Um, might be problems with water and roadways, um, as well as some other factors. Uh, we are one of the many, who, well, went dry this year, um, in late September. Um, we have had for forty years, no problem with water, but because of the extreme drought, all of our ponds and the brooks, which I was surprised to hear the hydrology report, I don't know when that was conducted, but in September, our ponds and brooks all went dry, as did our water supply. So we, we now have a new well that we had put in about a week or so ago, but we were out without water for a while. And I know several of my neighbors, um, just through some of the contacts we've had, have had similar problems. So I think for me, my main concern with ninety-six units coming in less than a mile away from us, um, and we're in a valley, um, sort of area off of, um, Madison Road, will be a concern of, you know, great impact for us in terms of water supply. I know that everyone has said that that's not gonna occur, but, um, as I said, I, I know that we've had extreme conditions this year, and I do think some of our neighbors are very concerned about that. Um, I think the, I don't know about waste and septic, you know, as well, but, um, again, that's one of my main concerns. The other factor is traffic, um, and the roadways. Um, I've lived out here, as I said, for forty years. I know on Town Farm Road, as well as Mile Road, uh, we are in a rural area. We purchased our property here because we wanted to be in a less condensed area, less, um, dense area and had less traffic. On Town Farm Road, where this property is located or the entrance to this property, in the wintertime, the roads are very narrow, trucks come down. I'm concerned with not just the houses and their cars, but, you know, there'll be service delivery trucks, I'm sure. There'll be, you know, other sort of vehicles that will be going in and out of this property besides the owners. And trucks on this road in particular are very difficult for people to maneuver. I know, um, again, we've not had to concern ourselves with something like Tyog Avenue or areas in Coventry that are much more, you know, congested. So for us, it's a big issue that we would like to not see. And I know for many of the neighbors who walk out here, you know, we bought the land so that we could have, you know, either animals out here, you know, some of our neighbors have horses, some of us, you know, walk regularly, this, this traffic is going to be a big concern. Um, I'm just surprised that someone would want to take a rural area with, you know, one house for three acres and consider putting ninety-six units in. I, I am just very disappointed that if that should happen and if the board would approve it. Um, again, we all bought our property with the intent, I, I don't know our current valuation, but I'm sure, and I believe that, you know, for us to have to worry about water and other factors, if we were to ever sell our property, we would have major concerns. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. L, Lully, Ms. Lully. Uh. Who's up next, Russ?
Uh, I'm gonna bring in Ann Dixon at this time.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Uh, my name is Ann Dixon, one forty-one Perry Hill Road. I am on the Coventry Town Council, but I am not here as a member of the council. I'm here simply as a voter in town and in this particular district. Uh, these are some of the questions I have. I've heard many of the proposals on developments, but I did not hear any information that seems to be standard in many of the proposals that I have heard. Uh, here's one of my questions. Will the condo owner be allowed to rent out property? In other words, must the owner live in that property? Uh, number two, what will be the estimate or impact on the school system? We have not heard any information on that. Next, what will be the impact on town services? Um, I understand that the snow and trash removal will be held by, be accountable by the association, but there are many other services in town which are offered to all residents, uh, those in associations and not in association, so I'd like to have an estimate on that. And my last question is, what is the estimate on the impact on taxes collected? Uh, we've heard some information that perhaps evaluations will go down. Some people say it may go up, so I'm not really clear as to whether the town can expect some kind of additional revenue coming in, or there may be some kind of a net loss. So those are some of the questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon.
Miss, do you, do you want me to address any of those, uh, Mr. Chair?
Sure, if you want to address them yourself or with experts, that would be fine.
Um, well, I, I think great questions by the councilwoman.
Um. Excuse me, um, don't call me a councilwoman because I'm only here as an interested voter this evening, okay?
Thank you, Miss. Uh, no problem, Ms. Dixon. Um, three, three of the four questions are answered by the fiscal impact analysis that was submitted to the planning board. Um, and that, that brings in all the services that potentially any development impacts on the town from school to, uh, automobile, automobile taxes, interest in the bank, um, like marriage licenses, et cetera. Based on the projected valuations and the number of units, the project has a positive tax impact of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars to the town of Coventry. Um, as far as the question of renting the units.
So, the page over, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand per what unit of time?
One hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars per annual year.
Per year.
Per year.
Okay.
And the question about rent, we have not given that any consideration, but my expectation would be that, yes, a unit could be rented. There might be a standard that says it has to be rented for a minimum of three months or something, but, um, you know, there's no restriction that any property in the town of Coventry in, including anybody's single family house can't be rented either.
Okay, thank you. I did not, I have not seen the complete packet, so I did not know what all the information was before the planning commission. And it's helpful for the, um, entire public to understand the impact of these, uh, developments on the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I think I heard, uh, impact to the schools, uh, you, you're not envisioning a lot of s- s- school age student in the, students in this development according to a study.
No, according, according to the fiscal impact, based on the formula that we have to use, the projection was twenty-seven children. And that, that cost comes off the taxes and we come up with the net one thirty-seven after the education factor. Um, we don't ex. We don't expect twenty-seven school age children here. The, the development is projected to be, um, millennials starting out and retirees. That's our projection. Um, and that's why the design is such that there's not a lot of amenities. Um, you know, if we had, if we had a pool house, if we had, um, you know, a clubhouse, then you're more inclined to get the families. Um, and that's really not the target market. We see people who are starting and ending. Um, and the rest of the town is for the families.
Yep, and as far as services, I think it would be fire and, and police would be the, the main two services that would be requested for that.
Yep, and that's all part of your fiscal statement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your questions, Ms. Dixon. They were very, very good.
Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Mr. Crossman?
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna bring on Terry Bazzard. Terry, can you hear us? You have to unmute, please.
Uh, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bissard.
Thank you so much for your time. Uh and yeah, I'm Terry Bissard. I live at one five six Mile Road and uh one of the uh Mr. Pagalini mentioned my property, so I'll make sure I I discuss and try and give you a feel for the impact that we feel that we have that this project will have on us. Uh I, like I said, I'm at one five six Mile Road. Uh we bought twenty acres here a couple of years ago. The project covers the entire back of my property. And the bulk of this project, the phase three project, is going to be less than a hundred feet from my property, uh which I'll explain here shortly. Uh again, thanks for your time and efforts on this. Uh I am a retired engineer, so I got deep into the books on this, especially the Coventry Comprehensive Plan and the Affordable Housing Documents. I thought they were real well-done. And it helped me understand that the rules and regulations of the community were put in place, and that's what it, one of the assessors was saying too, is we understand what the rules of this community are. Help me undersize, understand it, give you some comments here. So given that, uh I've given Mr. Crossman several pages separately on traffic, uh wetlands, items. I'm not going to go through that, but I do have a background as an engineer. I was in the Navy for twenty years, done numerous joint planning operations around the world. So I can defer those comments to uh separate things, but I I hopefully the board members do have that information, so.
Yeah, I read your email, uh, Mr. Bissard. It was well-written.
Thank you. I I I just tried to do my uh due diligence on this. So uh again, uh I retired from the Navy and after retired from the Navy, we moved to Mile Road over four years ago. Uh it's our forever home here. We have our in-laws in this uh separate part and we take care of them. Before that, we lived in Warwick for over seventeen years, so we'd lived in a crowded subdivision and and it was good for the time by the airport. But when we moved here, like uh was mentioned earlier, we paid a premium price of this house, so you know, uh it's public records, so I'm going to state it's over half a million bucks for uh property. It was a bidding war and tough to get it. Uh and that's because it was rural residential zone three and had all this open space, had deers, had all these uh forestry things that uh we we developed. But you know, it was told us, you know, all the residents on Mile Road and elsewhere in rural residential three, they all have these long deep lots because you have to have three acres or more to live here. And we understood that, especially after you look at the comprehensive plan, because there's limited water here. Yeah, I met a lot of neighbors too that have had to refrac their wells. Uh there's no sewer, sewage is obviously, and we lose power all the time. So power resources are are bad at best because there's trees everywhere. So uh what we did by the property, we converted to a full forestry designation, and I had to go through the town of Coventry and Rhode Island uh DM, pay a forester, maintain the land. I have to keep doing that. And that's designed to, and it states if you have that, it serves to enhance the agricultural values, land values, and the natural heritage in that site that concerns the forest and wildlife habitat and ecosystem. So when I looked at this con- condo project, I said, this is a complete uh rejection of my forestry plan that I already had in, REM, DM, DM had. And it goes against what Coventry's approved to me, and and I feel like the game has been changed on me that. The other big problem I have with this is I I would recommend that you guys go see the site, especially in the back three, phase three. It's very rocky, it's very hilly. It's going to basically require bulldozing deton- detonation to flatten it out because it is very rough and it's full forest. It's all going to be gone. So the other problem I have with it is Boyd Brook is really the only uh brook in the in area for local wildlife, and as they stated, the darn thing even dried up in September. So if that gets, if this gets put in fences around it and ninety-six homes have lights on constantly, there's not going to be any wildlife for any of us around here. So uh one of my neighbors really put it best to me when I told him about the project. They said, wait a minute, they wouldn't expect or allow me to bring and raise chickens in Providence or a crowded residential neighborhood in Newport or something because that's exactly against the rules that are there. And so why are they being allowed to do this in our rural neighborhood? So uh just a couple of things in closing and I'll wrap it up. Uh all our neighbors uh paid a premium for this site and we follow the rules. You saw it at the last several meetings I've been at. Everybody has to go through you to get a garage adjusted or shed put on. And uh we maintain and we live with this rural lifestyle, which requires us to uh, you know, have things like generators, backup power. And it really shouldn't be removed as a stroke of a pen because we're following the rules and we just asking that it stay and you follow your comprehensive plan. And then two quick other things I want to tell you about is the wetlands. I I, if you look, I did any kind of research. The wetlands are not correct. There are more wetlands than just around Boyd Brook. So the site has that wrong. Uh there's items called a natural heritage area. My forester told me about this. This is designated nationally as a uh endangered species of wildlife. This natural heritage area goes through the entire entrance and where all the mailboxes are and where everything's stated. So is that natural heritage area just going to be blown off? Because it certainly wasn't mentioned in any of these presentations. Uh you already talked about traffic, but uh the last thing I want to leave you with is the affordable housing. I mean, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and then per their plan, this is a nine hundred and twelve square foot place. A mobile home has nine hundred and eighty to a thousand square feet and it has two bathrooms. This is much less than that. It's not affordable in any way. And then the last thing I want to leave you on, and it worries me as a naval planner, is the sewage. There is an elevation difference throughout this property, and they, you could see from their site plans, it's much higher in the back, much lower in the beginning. Phase one, the sewage would be required to be pumped up in an active sewage pump or something like that to get to that area. Who's going to maintain that? What happens if power runs out? Uh people who move out here don't always follow things and septic tanks get filled up. What if a night, uh their septic tank got full of diapers or plastic? You could have a real serious environmental issue with that. So please, please uh uh take a deep look at this. I know you will, but uh all we're asking is you follow the comprehensive plan and follow the rules that we're all uh happily living with out here. So I really do appreciate the board's time and uh thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mr. Bissard. And and you're a very well-written email.
Thank you, I tried.
Mr. Pagalini, would you like to answer any of those concerns, wetlands and sewage?
Mr. Bissard's comments um are noted. Um I think that our, Mr. Rabidou has flagged the wetlands. And at preliminary, we will have our um application back from DEM, hopefully. So we'll we'll know definitively, but I believe we are in our numbers and uh as part of the ISDS approval, we'll we'll take a look at, elevate, um I I hear what um Mr. Bissard is saying. As I've heard what the board has said, and um I think we're going to be good for Mr. Bissard um ultimately if um if if my thought process from what I'm hearing from the board is what they would like, is what I can put on paper, I think will be good. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Bissard, is it, was the the questions answered to your liking?
Well, uh natural heritage area isn't mentioned anywhere. Uh my Rhode Island DM won't even tell me what's there because it's supposedly endangered, but it covers the entire entrance and it certainly should be at least looked into. And the wetlands aren't correct because if you go to the Rhode Island DM site, you can clearly see that there's other wetlands on there than the other side. And I think Mr. McGrath's going to probably talk to that too because some of that's near his house. And he's lived there for a long time, but uh I am very worried about this. This is a sewage treatment plant you're basically taking on. And if they go under, as you said, some of the condo fees aren't paid by low-income housing. The town of Coventry inherits a sewage plant, so we need to look at that, given our budget or lack of budget that we have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours also.
I'll gladly address the natural heritage area, Mr. Pagalini, if you'd like me to.
Mr. Chair. Okay, just say your name.
This is Scott Rabidou. I'm the wetland biologist for the project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And 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 basically, as he pointed out, DEM doesn't give out that information uh in terms of, you know, what may or may not be on the property in terms of natural heritage. If there's a plant or an animal of concern within a general area, it's mapped on the DEM database as a potential natural heritage area. It is part of our wetland application to make sure that that is addressed. We will, we will petition the DEM. They will give us that information and we will make sure that you know, if we do have a natural heritage plant or animal, we have to address that as part of the wetland application. So that that usually is done prior to getting back to preliminary. As far as question about the wetlands on the site and there may being other wetlands on the site, again, I've delineated the wetlands on this property and DEM has been on this property uh over the course of the years for several different matters. We have to show all wetlands within the property that could impact, that could be impacted by the project area. If we are not showing certain wetland, department will review the entire property as part of that application. And if we've missed any, they have to be identified and shown on the plan, and we have to demonstrate that the project will not have any impact on those wetlands. So there is that layer of uh, you know, check and balances that that takes place prior to getting back to you uh with preliminary because we've gone through that DEM wetland process for both wetlands and the natural heritage area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Flynn, would you like me to bring somebody else in?
Yes, I think the questions were were answered and they'll be in more depth, I I believe. Uh Mr. Pagalini addressed that.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to bring in Matthew Felice. Matthew, could you please unmute yourself?
Hello, my name is Matthew Felice. Uh I live at two sixteen Mile Road. Uh we've lived uh, we've lived in uh Coventry for almost the last twenty years. Um we moved uh into the Hunter's Crossing neighborhood uh when we first moved into Coventry, lived there for a number of years and uh realized that um that proximity of living uh to neighbors uh was simply undesirable. Uh so we decided to look around to move into an area that was far less dense. Um rural RR three was highest on our list because, one, we could afford it and, two, it gave us um the elbow room that we so desired. Uh we moved out here two years ago and we have loved it absolutely ever since. Um the one biggest thing that we've been concerned with uh with this project, well, several things um is the uh water situation. Um I know wetlands right now, there just aren't any because everything is bone-dry. If you've been out here within the last three months, um there is, any of the standing water that we've ever had is completely gone. The the best you can find is wet muck uh out here. Uh most of my neighbors, as has been previously said, um have had to either re-drill, refrac uh their wells. Um I've had issues with my well, not water supply, but water quality. And to call a well specialist right now, I was given a December, maybe January timeframe uh because they are that busy. Uh literally, everybody out here is negatively affected by water supply. So to be able to tell us that there is plenty of water out here seems completely wrong. Um it's it's not up, it's not close to the surface anymore. If you want to drill down five, six hundred feet, sure, it's there. Um the issue that we're going to end up running into is when this development drills down six, seven hundred feet to find water and our water is significantly above that, our wells are going to go dry far before their wells go dry. And they're going to be draining and siphoning the aquifer that we're all sitting on. We're all sitting on the same water. It's not like it's completely separate. It can't be. Additionally, they're going to put all that sewage back into the ground. An eighty-five percent recovery rate, well, eighty-five percent of the water that they consume is going to go right back into the ground as waste, and that's going to go down into the aquifer and pollute the drinking water of the surrounding areas. That's, that is also unacceptable because we, I live at a lower elevation than this project. And so that's going to end up in my drinking water as well. Uh traffic is a major issue as far as I'm concerned because we have minimal traffic out here. The roads are designed for that. They're barely two-lane roads. There are instances where you have to pull over and let the cars coming ahead of, in front of you, I mean, the opposite direction, go past because there isn't enough width. Well, when you add three hundred more cars and less courteous drivers because they're not very well-invested in this area, they're going to drive however they feel like driving. They're not from around here. Um so the the, all these things are going to stack up to very, very negative consequences for all the residents that are out here. And I would also like to say thank you to my neighbor at one fifty-six Mile uh who was very, very thorough in his uh research in this project. I I just feel that this is extraordinarily bad news for this entire area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I'm sorry, you ready for the next person?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to bring in Shane McGrath at this time.
We're off, right?
Yeah.
So am I.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. McGrath.
Yes, hi. Uh my ne- my name is Shane McGrath. I live at uh seven forty-six Town Farm Road uh with my brother Kyle and his wife and their two children. I'd been living in Town Farm Road for about seven years and in Coventry for thirty-three. Uh I live directly abutting the entrance to the proposed property. Um at first, I'd like to respond to uh Mr. Pagalini's comment about the airstrip being unwanted use. I strongly disagree. I live in the house that the planes fly directly over, landing and taking off, and I think that airstrip is a great neighbor. Um I'd also like to ask a question about a statement that was made saying the closest unit to a property is eight hundred feet when they appear to look uh two hundred to three hundred feet on the map in front of me. I wonder if you would like to comment on that?
Mr. Pagalini? Mr. Chairman, the comment was eight hundred feet to Mile Road and that obviously other houses were closer to the ones on Town Farm Road.
Didn't say that. Okay, um well, I'd like to just make a a bunch of statements. Um I'm not saying that Mr. Mayozi does not have the right to develop this property, but in my opinion, he does not have the right to not comply with zoning regulations of RR three zone that all surrounding residents have to follow. There's also my opinion that this development must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Zoning chapter two five five, article five states RR three, rural residential districts. These are rural areas which public water or sewer are not available and in which municipal police, fire, school, and recreation opportunities and facilities are limited. This district is designed to minimize intensive development in order to protect groundwater reserves and to promote orderly development in a manner that appropriately reflects the surrounding land use and capacity of the town to service the resultant development. These areas are characterized by low-density residential development, larger states in certain low-density non-residential activities incidental to a rural environment. The minimum lot size is three acres. I cannot think of one way that this proposal coincides with that description. I bought this property so I could live in a RR three district and have its rural crack characteristics protected by zoning regulations and the comprehensive plan. If I wanted to live in a more densely populated part of town, I would have bought a property in a different zoning district. My property is one of the most negatively affected by this proposal due to its location directly abutting the entrance exit of Mr. Mayozi's property. The existing road into the property is approximately ten feet from the corner of my property. The main reason I purchased this property was because it is quiet, extremely private, and in a low-density rural neighborhood. If this proposal is approved, all of these conditions will be taken from me along with us, essentially changing the zoning district where I live. I urge you not to change the zoning district in which I purchased my property. In just about every way, this proposal does not comply with the zoning for a RR three. RR three, rural areas in which public water or sewer are not available and minimize intensive development in order to protect service and groundwater reserves. I am a level-two licensed water and distribution operator for the Kent County Water Authority. And in my opinion, this development is extremely dangerous to the aquifer and surrounding wells. A community public water system is required where zoning states there are not available in an area of RR three. Just this summer, the condo development, the Highlands on Hopkins Hill Road in Coventry, which is a hundred and twelve units depleted an aquifer in just fourteen years. Luckily, they had public water means and services ready for tie-in. We do not have a backup plan if our wells are affected. Luckily, they had public water means and services ready for tie-in. We do not have a backup plan if our wells are affected. The applicant's hydro geological study, section three point five states, in the absence of specific pumping test program information, no absolute warranty can be made because of distribution and the degree of bedrock fracturing, hydraulic interconnectivity remains unknown at this time. In regards to the project's impact upon groundwater and aquifer nearby wells, this information does not relate to me that the chance to affect our wells is minimal because it is unknown at this time. Hydro geological study also states that potential on-site contamination threats include wastewater disposal and stormwater runoff and control. The study also states, the report should not be considered a definitive final treatment of the geological and groundwater resources of the project site. This is not a very reassuring in regards to my well being affected. And in my opinion, the report should be inadmissible. Page six of the study, developed and is expected to have average daily water demand of fourteen thousand two hundred sixty gallons, two hundred sixty gallons per day. According to the EPA, the average US household uses about eighty-eight gallons of water per day for every person. The master plan states two hundred and seven residents times eighty-eight equals eighteen thousand two hundred and sixteen gallons per day. An understatement of four thousand gallons per day, which does not include fire suppression, irrigation and maintenance uses. Another point I'd like to make is ninety-six condos on seventy acres and a R R three three acre minimum. I would have never purchased this property if I thought there was a chance that ninety-six condos could be built behind my house. This also does not coincide with zoning regulations and does not coincide with surrounding properties. Planning regs, residential cluster developments are to be allowed by the planning commission only when a subdivider can demonstrate to the commission at the public informational meeting on the master plan that such a development would be a better use of the land than a conventional subdivision. And in the best interest of the residents of Coventry. Conventional development that was approved already years ago, the sixteen-house development, left a lot of open space between the butters and new residents, limited wells, private sectors, limited traffic impact. What I'd like to know, in what way is a cluster development more beneficial to direct the butters and surrounding residents to this property? Town of Coventry subdivision and land development regulation state, E four, promote existing natural and built environments and mitigate the significant negative impacts of proposed development on these, those environments. Section B dash five, promote subdivision and land development designs that are well-integrated to surrounding neighborhoods and concentrate development areas that can best support intensive use because of natural characteristics and existing infrastructure. Ways proposal does not comply, lack of infrastructure, no public wells or sewer, does not integrate with surrounding properties, most with three acres or more. Proposal does not mitigate significant negative impacts, it just creates them. High-density development decreasing current property value, noise and privacy negatively affected, adding a lot of traffic to a very narrow Town Farm Road, which is used as a cut-through to Connecticut and people drive extremely fast on this road already, increasing risk of collisions. Narrow entrance and exit of proposed development, increasing risk of collisions. This proposal is asking for five zoning waivers, eighteen subdivision and land development regulation waivers, sixteen major land development project waivers, eight comprehensive permit waivers, four general waivers for a grand total of fifty-one waivers. In my opinion, if this proposal is approved, the town is telling its residents that zoning regulations and comprehensive plan have absolutely no meaning in this town. I bought this property so I can enjoy quiet living, wooded natural surroundings, providing privacy, low-density development, preserving the area. I did not buy this property in R R three three-acre minimum to look at ninety-six condos from my backyard in plain sight, hundreds of people driving by my backside and front yard every day, to look at sewage pumping stations with generators, community mailboxes, which people have to visit once a day in plain sight of my backyard. I urge you to please follow zoning regulations and plan to best protect the investments of the butters and surrounding residents who purchase property in a rural district. While treating Mr. Mayozi failing, all we are asking is that he complies with zoning regulations and this proposal coincides with the comprehensive plan and the town protects the health and safety surrounding residents and the butters. Thank you. My father would also like to speak as well, since he has not signed in. I don't know if that is possible.
Absolutely possible.
All right, thank you, sir.
Can I please ask a question of Mr. McGrath? It's Heather the Stenographer.
Yes, please Heather.
Hi, I just wanna know if Mr. McGrath could please submit the documents that he was reading from, maybe to the planning director? So we, I could have them for my record, please?
I will, I just didn't get them done till very late last night, so I can send them over to you tomorrow or the day after.
Be very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hello, this is Paul McGrath. Do you want me to speak now or do you want me to wait?
No, you can speak, Paul McGrath, and you, just put your name and address, please, for the record.
Hey, my name is Paul McGrath. I live at ninety-one Calventown Road. I've been a resident of Coventry for thirty-five years. I am a member of the comprehensive plan review board. I am also a co-owner of the property at seven forty-six Town Farm Road. Couple of questions. At the, the present proposal is ninety-six units, which is slightly under, it's slightly under point seven four acres, which is three-quarters of an acre. And you, you've got a three, three-acre limit. I mean, that's, that's absurd. I mean, it, like my son said, the, the town regulations don't mean anything if you're gonna go from three acres down to three-quarters of an acre. The other thing is the traffic expert didn't mention that about seven o'clock in the morning, there's going to be about a hundred, I assume about a hundred and fifty cars trying to exit this one road to go to work. As we mentioned, there's ninety-six units, you're probably talking a minimum of a hundred and fifty cars to two hundred cars, so you've gotta talk a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty cars exiting this property within thirty feet of my son's home every morning. They gotta back up there trying to get out and exit that road. So there's gonna be traffic sitting, waiting to exit that property right next to my son's home with fumes and exhaust from cars, just sitting there. The other thing is this massive septic system. Anybody that has a septic system in their property knows that sooner or later the, the land, the ground becomes saturated and you have to replace it. Where are they gonna put another massive septic system like this once that ground becomes saturated with the septic system? I would hope that the board would reject this plan. Like, by the sounds of it, the developer's talking about reducing the number of homes. I'm estimating, he's probably gonna try to cut it down to sixty. It's still absurd in this neighborhood. As far as evaluation, we looked for two and a half years to find this property. Your real estate, people will tell you, you wanna own the, the least valuable piece of property in your neighborhood, and that's what we did. We bought a piece of property that's an acre and a quarter in a three-acre zone. We made out like a bandit, we thought we had a, an ideal situation. And then all of a sudden, this project's gonna be put in. It doesn't make any sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to bring in Sue. Sue, could you please unmute yourself? Sue, are you there? Could you please unmute yourself, please?
Hi, I'm sorry. Sue Paletta? Do you hear me okay?
Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Alright, sorry. Hi, my name is Susan Paletta. I live at four Whistle Lane. I am in a butter to this project. I just wanna thank everybody. I know it's a long night. I'll try to be very quick. Everybody on the board has had some very meaningful comments. I agree with all the statements that have been put forth by Terry Bissard, by Shane McGrath, Linda Lully, a lot of the other people who have spoken, Terry, Shane, myself, I know are all a butters. I'm not against development. I do oppose, though, granting projects that do not adhere to the current zoning and the comprehensive plan. I chose Coventry twenty years ago and I abide by all the regulations. I am on five acres as in a butter and it's one buildable lot. This project of ninety-six condominiums, homes on a site which was approved for sixteen homes goes against zoning tremendously. The area is zoned R R three, I know everybody knows that. It's three acres per home. These regulations were put in place for the safety of residents, taxpayers. Public record goes, my valuation is over five hundred thousand. I pay a lot of taxes to Coventry. I love Coventry and I love the rural aspect of it. And that's why I chose five acres and, and it's a buildable lot. I couldn't even have three. I just think, I just hope the planning commission does the right thing, follow the zoning. I don't think, I don't think the residents who rely on well water, we should not have to worry about jeopardizing our water quality and our quantity. I know several, several neighbors that they have had problems with their wells. They've had to put new wells in and fracture. So there has been a drought this year. Furthermore, there's gonna be tremendous, tremendous impact on services that are already stressed, such as the schools, the police and fire protection. There's gonna be more than twenty-seven students in any ninety-six condominium home development. But anyway, I'm sorry, I know it's late. I just hope the planning commission does the right thing and I just wanna thank you for your time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
Sorry, at this time, I'd like to bring in Laurie, oh, Laurie Madeiras. Laurie, could you please unmute yourself?
Yes, this is Laurie Madeiras's husband. We are at four eighteen, my name's Antonio Antunes. We live at four eighteen Town Farm Road. And we moved here two years ago. And my question would be, what is going to happen in the future when you can no longer have a massive septic system? And we have to tear up the roads and put in sewers and water supply because everything is just gonna be obliterated in the future?
I, I can't see sewers going down that way anytime soon, but if you wanna answer that, Mr. Paglirini?
I don't, I don't believe there is an answer anybody can give to that, Mr. Chairman. That is speculative at best. I, I don't have an answer.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, that's, that's normally what happens is nobody knows. Nobody knows until it actually happens and by the time the ninety-six units are in there, then it's too late. I mean, we paid, we paid good money, look just like everybody else that has spoken, to live in this area. And I did not expect to receive a flyer in my, in my mailbox with a ninety-six unit proposal. I'm sure a lot of the people, a lot of the quote-unquote experts that are here that are in this meeting, wouldn't want this project in their neighborhood. Because they don't live on Town Farm Road. They don't see the life that we live here on Town Farm Road. To them, they're just, they're just sitting behind a desk and they can say whatever they want, but they don't live here. We live here. We live here and the traffic is already bad enough and you can't tell me that there's gonna be less than two cars per unit on this. Two hundred more cars on this road cannot be supported, cannot be supported. You can't do this to us. You cannot do this to us. That is it. Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, I have one more and it just says, Suzer. I lost them. No, wait a minute, there they are.
I just seen it pop up.
Yep, you, sir, could you please unmute?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Arthur Suzer at Five Whistle Lane. And I know Mr. Paglirini stated that the houses that abut do not, the values are pretty low or in the two hundred to three hundred dollar range, but that's not so on this side. I abut, I bought a property that's eleven acres. We paid four thirty-five for a house that needed a complete renovation. I know my neighbor on the side of me paid over five hundred thousand, so that is completely false. And I bought my property to, to have land based on the R R three zoning. I came from Summerfield Estates, which was less than an acre property and we moved out here to get away from all that. So we have the eleven acres and we were looking into the forestry as well. But we couldn't get the forestry because we're just a little shy of that. We're ten and three-quarter acres, actually, and we needed eleven to do it. But we're still looking into, talking to D E M to get that forestry stuff or a tree farm or something like that. Another, a question that I had was, does the association limit the amount of people that can live in one of those units? And Mr. Paglirini stated that the kids in the development can play in the woods. What is to stop those kids from going on all the, and trespassing on private property that surround that? That's all I have.
Mr. Paglirini, you like to answer that?
The last part about trespassing?
And, and the, I guess the, the other question was home values and we.
And how many residents per unit are allowed?
Yes, anybody in the, how many people in the unit?
The homes are designed to be, there'll be no way of putting more than two bedrooms in the property. So could you have, how many persons can live in a two-bedroom home? There's no way of restricting how many persons can live there. It could be one, it could be three. Theoretically, it could be, you know, small kids, maybe two in the bedrooms. The second bedroom is not especially large. But just like there's no restriction for the number of people that can live in any house in the rest of town, there's, I can't restrict them. With regards to playing in the woods, you know, I've been involved in this particular parcel for nearly fifteen years. In one way or another, I represented the prior owner. And the problem is that a lot of the people use our land. Horses, hunting. There's no way. Everybody lives in the woods. I don't know if there's a stone wall at Mr. Suzer's property line and ours, but, you know, it, it's a matter of respect that they stay off our property. We hopefully stay off their property and if there's a problem, it'll get resolved, like gentlemen and neighbors can resolve it. With the, the, the comment was to Mr. Coyle regarding the homes at the entrance on Town Farm Road and their values. Obviously, I acknowledge that Whistle Lane and Autobahn Lane have higher values. But I also think it's, I say this respectfully, slightly disingenuous to, to talk about traffic because those areas are going Hope Furnace Road and other directions and Town Farm Road is not going to affect Whistle Lane nearly as much as it would to somebody who lives on Town Farm Road. You know, when, when this was a gravel operation, I had to handle the complaints of the neighbors about the rock crusher and all the dump trucks entering and exiting the property. When we got approval for the, the special use for the private airstrip, there was concern from the persons on Autobahn and Whistle Lane about planes crashing. Everything works itself out and we try to mitigate things as best we can. And, and, you know, a lot has been said about R R three, but I, I, I'm trying to choose my words very cautiously. This is not the fault of the Coventry Planning Department. This is not the fault. The fault of the Coventry Planning Department. This is not the fault of. The Planning Commission. The state of Rhode Island has adopted a comprehensive permit statute. That overrides all local zoning. And gives us the right to make this application. Um, the only way that the town can stop applications for comprehensive permit. Is to get their affordable housing. Over ten percent, then they're immune from future applications. The project is within the bounds of the state. I am, my experts have listened to everybody's comments tonight. I expect that shortly the planning board will. Give me some guidance on what they would like at the November meeting. We are open if told that changes need to be made. Um, we are not going to. The change has to come from the planning board under the certificate of completeness. Because if I make a change, everything resets and I'm not about to, to reset the clock. Um, so if the planning board. Has changes they would like us to consider for the November meeting. We'd be open to that. You know, I've heard a lot this evening. Um, now I've, I've tried not to respond and to, and to be respectful to neighbors because I understand. I mean, I've, I've been doing this for twenty years and I only represent developers and it's, it's never easy. Um, you know, some of the arguments are legitimate. Some of the arguments can be classified as not in my backyard. Um, you know, it's, it's a tough balancing act. Because the state has opened the door for affordable housing. When a community doesn't have the proper amount and that's why we're here. Um, you know, years ago, there was talk of. Large amounts of affordable housing going in the center of New England to protect the rest of the town. And that didn't go for whatever reason. So right now, comprehensive permit applications are permissive. And that's why we're here and the board can. Can give me guidance, the board can do something, but I just want the neighbors to know that. Within the bounds of what may seem an unfair process. The state law can overrule your local zoning and I get it. It's not pleasant. But, um, it's the law. And the appeal of this, if, if the developer wishes, it goes to the state housing appeals board. And the first question they ask is, does the town of Coventry have eight percent housing stock? And the answer is no, and it becomes an uphill fight for the town at that point. We've presented experts for traffic safety. And we understand if one more car goes on the road, the residents think that it's more than are there today. Um, and nobody wants additional cars. But the testimony was the road is currently underutilized from its design capability. Um, water, you know, Mr. Mr. McGrath made a. Very salient point about our report, but he has to understand that it is a master plan report. And Mr. Ferrari can do all his due diligence at preliminary. And find out that this project is not sustainable and we go away. But you don't do those reports until you have master plan approval. Because it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars to do that study. Um, and to the person who is unaware of what this planning commission does. Um, it, it seems unfair on some of the points that we've raised tonight. But this commission is familiar with all the standards and, um, and their duties and. I'll end here and say, give me guidance if you want a revised plan. Um, I have ideas that I can go back to my client with. I've heard fewer units. I've heard garages. I've heard larger units. If there's fewer units, the septic becomes smaller, the water demands become smaller. Um, I can't change my access point at Mr. McGrath's house. I can put a fence, I can put. Thick landscaping so that I do the best I can to minimize his negative effects. That, that I think is a given and will be a condition. I, I, something's coming, hopefully. Um, but I'll take direction from the board on what you would like, Mr. Chair.
Well, uh, I don't believe we're done with public hearing. Um, Mr. Mr. Crossman, is there anybody else in the queue that would like to talk?
I have three more, sir.
Sorry. No, there's no problem. I, I appreciate you explaining the, the comprehensive permit. Because, um, from what I'm understanding, you're not going to pull the ninety six units. Um, that will, if, if, from what I'm understanding and I've done these many times. Uh, if you do go to the state housing appeals board, the ninety six units will stand. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Paglirini. So we're trying to do our due diligence. We're trying to hear from, from the community. And then ultimately we have to make a decision and we don't always agree on this board, which, which is good because. You know, we don't rubber stamp anything on this board. We take our due diligence on every project. So hearing that, Mr. Crossman, if you want to.
I just want to let you know, Mr. Flynn, I misspoke. I said three. We have five. So at this time, I'm going to bring forward, uh, Phil St. Jean. Uh, Phil, I brought you in. Could you please unmute yourself? Uh, Mr. St. Jean, could you please unmute yourself?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, it, it's, it's ten past ten now. Do you have a, um, an anticipated? Cut off?
I'm, I'm in that, I'm in that area.
Okay.
Um, let, let's hear from Mr. St. Jean. Um, if we have three or four left, maybe we can get through those. I'll certainly keep public hearing open. Um, let's, let's hear from Mr. St. Jean and. Uh, we're not going to render a decision tonight. I think everybody's aware of that. Are you there, Mr. St. Jean?
Yes, I am.
Then you name an address, please.
I would like to speak on, on behalf of this, this project.
Name and address, please.
This is, this is probably the fourth time that this attorney.
Mr. St. Jean, could you, could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, uh, Philip St. Jean, six seventy-two Town Farm Road. I'm in the butter to this property.
Thank you.
Uh, I've, I've lived here for thirty-five years. And thi- this has been an ongoing situation since I've lived here. Uh, the gravel bank, I had no opposition to because it was, it was here when I moved in. And I'm not one to say now that I'm here, I don't want it in my backyard. I was not opposed to it, but. Studley Brothers years back attempted to do the same thing that's happening right now. They attempted to put in a hundred or more houses, uh. Condominiums in this particular area that has already been stripped of all the. Forestry. The loom, the, the topsoil, the whole nine yards, all for the price of, of the dollar, the almighty dollar. That project got shot down years ago. Then came the project of. The airstrip. The airstrip was one that I approved of because I, I absolutely assumed that. A single airplane engine taking off once or twice a week would be a beneficial area to, to. Seventy-five acre parcel of land rather than a housing development. It would be something that would be a less, less offensive area to the area. Then came the proposition for the rifle range. Which was absolutely ridiculous in an area like this. I mean, this, this, this was ridiculous. You don't put a rifle range in an area where there are houses surrounding it and what have you. So now we're dealing with the same thing all over again. I've watched this piece of land being stripped of all its forestry. The land that the, the, the topsoil all gone, gravel hauled it out. We're dealing with two or three feet above the water table in this area. I've watched horse manure being hauled into this area, buried into the ground. Uh, it's, it's just ridiculous. Why don't we just do what's supposed to be done? It's a three acre zoning area. Let's do what's supposed to be done in this area. And you know, I'm seventy-eight years old and I'm sick of fighting. I want to keep my piece of land the way it is with no development. I've got twelve acres. And it borders that piece of land. The traffic is going to be astronomical. Uh, please, I, I'm asking this and, and not only this, I'm going to go one step further. To put this on this Zoom or whatever you want to call it. Ninety-nine percent of the people don't know how to get on it and cannot be. Cannot emphasize what they want to say. So I think this proposal should be postponed until we can do it face to face. And everybody on this road could have their say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. St. Jean. Mr. Crossman, how many, uh, how many in the queue?
I have two. I have, and you want to just cap it at these two and if anybody else? No, I have one.
At these two because we're hitting ten sixteen, so.
I have one. Nope. Yes, I have one. I'm going to bring them on and we'll say that's it.
Okay, now keep public hearing open.
Yep. Hold on, they're coming in. Uh, Narcoits, where? Where'd they go?
Uh, there she is.
There she is. I see her. Could you please unmute yourself?
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
I got a name and, uh, name and address for the, uh, for the record.
Yeah, Diane Narcoits at one thirty-six Rock Pine Road.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to address the fact that, um, I think Phil St. Jean said it, um, very well as far as what the property. Um, has, has, um, over the years, what I've seen happen to that, um, the proposals for that property. And what he did forget was, was even, um. Went through, it was even proposed to be a golf club or golf course or something like that at one point. Um, and I just wanted to, um, address the fact that. Uh, the, the issue of the lights, uh, um, lighting there, this is a rural part of Coventry. I can, from my house, I can see the lights of the, of the, um. Elementary school from, in, in the sky, it illuminates the sky from here. So the fact that these. This is a rural part of Coventry, the, um, light pollution is a big factor. Um, we did buy this property. We have, we're on five acres here. We are, um, zoned for five acres where I am. And. This, um, these condos should be set to be, um. What this land was, what that, this area was proposed to be. Um, and that the condos is an inappropriate use of that space. But the one thing that I did want to address was the fact that, um, oh, it's about the lights. And that light pollution in this rural part of, of Coventry will be, um, another factor to consider.
Thanks, Diane.
Thanks.
Is that it?
That is it, sir.
All right, I think, um, I think we're going to stop it here. I'm going to keep public hearing open because we just, uh, we're at ten twenty. We've been here since six thirty, some of us since six. Um, our next meeting, I believe, is the twenty-fifth.
I believe it's the eighteenth, sir.
Oh, it's on the eighteenth.
Yeah, Thanksgiving.
So as of now, do you want to, uh, put, put this off to November eighteenth? Oh, you thinking, yes, Mr. Crossman.
I'm sorry. Um. Yeah, that's fine. I got, I have no issues with that. Um, the eighteenth is good.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Paglirini?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay, so we're going to push this off to November eighteenth. Can I have a, um, have a motion to adjourn?
Jim Kenny, motion to adjourn?
Second, Carl.
Second by Mr. Mo- motion by Mr. Kenny, second by Mr. Mattson.
Hold on, sir.
Yes.
I believe Mr. Paglirini was looking for some direction.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry, John, we're trying to get out of here.
I kind of wondered about that myself.
I'm sorry, Jerry. You know, it's getting late. Um, well, m- my opinion is, uh, I would like to see garages and certainly reduce. The ninety-six units by at least a third, um, because of the extreme, uh. The, the extreme use of the sewers and the water, I mean, the septic's in the water. Uh, that would certainly lessen the, um, use of those. Um, Mr. Clooney, you have something to say?
Well, I, I just kind of wanted to follow up on that. I, I don't know what the correct balance is. We have Crompton Meadows on the other end of town and granted, they have water and they do have sewer. Um, they're two bed, I believe, two bath units. Um, I'm sure there's a balance. Your client is going to need to look at what his profitability is going to be. He wants to keep the affordable component. Um, he's got to compete with other subdivisions that are going on in town. But, um, but just bear in mind the abutting property values. I think that's probably the biggest factor along with the density. So there's some balance, whether it's cutting it by a third or cutting it by a half. If you increase the size of the dwelling, if you add a half bath. Um, there's a few factors that I think, uh, might lend itself to the proper balance. Uh, I tend to agree with Shab and, and the situation that Coventry's in with its affordable housing stock, whether the abutters like it or not. That's the fact. Um, that they, they could be a worse outcome if we don't, um, come to some agreement. Um, but, but I would really like to see you sharpen your pencil and see if you can make this into a, a nice plat. Where it won't have, um, an, an adverse impact on the abutting property owners. And I, as you indicated, and, and maybe some of the folks don't realize, this is just a master plan approval. This is just a concept plan. It's the preliminary approval that will come in the future. There'll still be another public hearing. People will have to, an opportunity to weigh in on the details. When, when the, when after D E M has looked at the septic, after they've done further analysis on the wells. After the screening and some of the other site details can be, can be put forth and I realize that all costs money. So. So that's just, you know, that's where I'm going with this. Um, we do have some, I mean, I know Mr. McGrath was passionate about the R R three zone. He's on one point one acres just outside. You've got. We do have some, I mean, I know Mr. McGrath was passionate about the RR3 zone. He's on one point one acres just outside. You've got seventy acres back there. I don't know what the correct number is. I'm I'm sure it's not gonna be thirty-five units, but and and Mr. Flynn referred to cutting it by a third, but whatever that number is that you think will make make this into a nice development for the town, still allow your client to make a profit, still have the affordable housing component and not adversely affect the abutting property values, I think would, would bode very well.
Is that it, Rick?
Yep.
I see Mr. Ray's.
I've got a question because I I don't understand something, because I'm still new on this and I'm still learning. If we said no, just, I'm just, we said no, because I I believe it's way too many units. I agree with you, Mr. Flynn, gotta cut it by a third. You can take this, Mr. Pagliarini, can take this to Rhode Island and we still can lose, say, you know, still can get the thing in on this because we're underneath that law.
Potentially, it's the, 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 the State Housing Appeals Board, and I see Mr. Dag- D'Agostino can address this much better than I can.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Ray. So the the process is so the decision of the Planning Commission on on this, on this application is is appealable to the State Housing Appeals Board called Shab. And they have, without, I don't like to paint with a broad, broad brush, but it is safe to say that they feel very strongly that all cities and towns should be at that ten percent affordable level. And they do what they, they they do push for that. So it is, it is likely that if the board, if the, if the board were to deny this application as it, as it has been presented, that Mr. Pagliarini would file his appeal to Shab and it is more likely than not that they will be looking at his proposal more favorably than the interests of the town and the individual folks who've spoken this, you know, spoke this evening.
And Mr. D'Agostino, then if that happens, to say, and they put ninety-six units in, and then they, and then they were wrong on the water, say they run out of water and the septic system goes wrong, Coventry's in trouble or Rhode Island is, takes over?
No, the the state isn't gonna accept any liability and 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 to be very candid with you, it is the, a lot, a lot of these, a lot of these cases that do go to the State Housing Appeals Board, oftentimes there's a negotiated settlement. And and in other words, where the town, because it's, it's, it, because the town is incentivized to not have so many units, the town would be in a position to work with the, work with the applicant as well as under the, under the auspices of the State Housing Appeals Board to try to craft some kind of more reasonable solution rather than trying to take a square peg and put it in a round hole. But but it, 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 in speaking with broad terms, you know, it's always better if, if the, if, if, if the applicant can hear from this board things that might alleviate a lot of the tension and the, the, the significant, seemingly significant impacts to putting this project in this location. Because nobody, nobody wants, it's really not in Coventry's best interest to have the State Housing Appeals Board decide this case.
Yeah, so my opinion is at least half, I would say a third to cut it.
Anybody else on the board would like to give Mr. Pagliarini any guidance? I think he's, I think he's heard a lot from the board and I think the residents, Dave, you did a great job explaining that. The residents have to understand that you know, we're here to get the best plan possible before, before it would go to Shab, where we have Coventry's best interest at heart. And this is master plan, so we haven't seen any landscaping designs. We haven't seen any renditions. And and Mr. Pagliarini has said he's gonna come back with something else next month, so then we'll, we'll vent that project if if it differs from this one.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've heard what's been said. I've got some, what I think would be some good compromise type ideas. And my expectation is I'm gonna lean heavy on my experts to update all their reports. Hopefully, within a week to ten days so that everybody has ample time to review it before the eighteenth. And to Attorney Delaney, once I figure out exactly what I'm going to do, I will get you square footage and unit numbers so that Coyle can do his.
Surely. Thank you, John.
Yep.
So now I think we can get to the point of adjournment?
I'll try again.
Okay, adjourn, motion by Mr. Kenny, second?
Second by Carl.
Second by Mr. Mattson, all those in favor? All right, see you on the eighteenth.
John, thank you very much.
Good night.